Meeting underway. Just want to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded by Marshall Community Media. Is there anybody else in here that is recording this meeting? Thank you. Can you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge of Allegiance.
This is the sign of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, so welcome, everybody, to the Joint Select Board Advisory Board meeting on September 23rd at 7:00. I would like to motion to vote to open the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, would you like to?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to open the meeting of the advisory board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Chris, I will, I don't really have anything to say. I will turn it over to you. I don't know how you want to introduce everybody or whatever, but.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm Chris Rolland. I am the acting chair of the advisory board right now as I was the elected vice chair of the board. And just wanted to say that we, this is the first time that a number of us have been together as the advisory board. We just added a number of new members and had some members change and leave us. So it really is our intent tonight as an advisory board to have our committee listen and learn and, you know, get some better understanding of this warrant. We recently, I mean, we've only received the warrant a few days ago. So we were looking forward to getting together and discussing it and meeting with the appropriate department heads. But tonight, our hope is to learn and have the opportunity to ask questions if, if, if the opportunity, you know, presents itself. So that's all I have. Mr. Chair.
All right. I guess if you want to start with, starting with the articles.
Okay.
Or if you want to, if you want to.
Oh, sure. Thank you, thank you. So I'll give the opportunity for our board to introduce themselves real quickly.
My name is Scott Swain. I'm a new member.
Vin Falikara, I've been a member since May of 2025.
Paul DeChristopher, I've been a member five years.
Tony McCallum, a member 20 years.
Peter Simonelli, new member.
Ed DuBois, new member.
Great. And I'm, again, I'm Chris Rolland, so. All right. You can start with Article One.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Could I just, just say, go over a few things?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry.
Peter Moran, I'm the Endrum Town Administrator. I just want to go over a few things. The articles, there are 32 articles that are before you. I'm happy to describe generally the articles that involve potential spending. The planning articles and stuff like that, the planning folks can, can answer your questions on far better than me. And I just want to go over a couple of things. One, you've, unlike where you were last year when you had your special town meeting, you know what your free cash number is. The Department of Revenue with the state annually looks at the closed books of each municipality and they, each municipality takes those closed books to the Department of Revenue for review. And surplus revenue and cer, and excess operational funds are identified by the town and then certified by the state to exist. Usually that takes several weeks after the submittal. We had a quick turnaround this time because we submitted a very clean and clear submission. And we're nine, we're probably 90 days ahead of where you were last year. You didn't have free cash certified until at least December of last year. Now you've got it, one of the first communities in the Commonwealth to get it certified. So that speaks well of, of the staff, the accounting, the treasure collector that put, you know, put the work in to get us into the clear. The general fund amount that has been, been approved by the, by the Commonwealth is 6.4 million. That's approximately $200,000 less than last year's amount. That's, that can vary based on when certain funds become available to, to the town. If they came in, in June instead of August, it would have been a little bit higher. So we're at about 5.2% of operational budget in reserve. Over the last five years, you've been between, your free cash has been between 4.8 and 5.7% I believe of operational budget. So you're in, in the spot where you want to be and where you have been in recent years. Your enterprise waste water fund, enterprise is 519,000. The water enterprise fund is 2.3 million. The solid waste enterprise is 2.33 million. So you've got decent numbers in, in each of those as well. I'm happy to go over, you know, the articles and get brief descriptions. I won't be able to get, I'll try to give you some detail, but you shouldn't be, this is more of an introduction to this process and to this warrant. And we can go into detail at, at a later meeting. So Article One is, is the unpaid bills article. It is a pretty standard article that takes a, it addresses bills that are received after the closing of the fiscal year. It's, it's basically a bookkeeping issue. It requires a nine tenths vote of, of the town meeting, or an eight, is it eight tenths or nine tenths?
Nine tenths.
Nine tenths vote of, of the town meeting to pay them. Again, it, this is, these are, it is not unusual for bills to come in late or to receive bills late after the fiscal year is closed. So this is, you know, a small amount of approximately $13,574 worth of bills that, that are being requested.
Okay, it's pretty standard. Any questions?
I'd like to congratulate Megan and Sean that, that's come down and been stayed consistent since you had all your changeover and software. Good job.
There we go.
I have a question. There's some here that are marked year '24. Is there a reason why we are behind the ball on those ones?
It's all right.
There are actually a couple from 2023 as well, because it's the, it can be the strangest things at times when vendors actually start checking their books and they're like, oh, town of Marshfield hasn't paid it. So it was a couple of departments that they really did just come in like this recently over the last couple of months.
So is it, is it the vendor that's noticing that things weren't paid or is it?
Okay.
And we do double check to make sure that it wasn't paid because if it's that delayed, there would be the question of maybe they just made a mistake.
All right. Is there, I mean, do we have a, a process in now where we're going to, you know, avoid these?
Yeah, unpaid bills, you're always going to have, to a degree, you're always going to have unpaid bills. What I will say is that several departments did a lot more homework on it this year. Like they actually, rather than waiting for the invoices to come in, they actively contacted vendors that they use regularly to find out if they had unpaid bills. So there was a lot more meticulous process this year.
So it's, I, I, under the impression that comes down to the vendor submitting the bill?
Mm-hmm.
And if they don't, then it's out of the control of the, the department, I guess?
Correct.
Okay.
Chair, I can attest, I was working with Department of Public Works staff to cha, you know, they were chasing down vendors to get their numbers down. So I do know that there was a significant effort to reduce the num, the number of submissions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the select board?
Article Two is an article that would address the, or ask the town to ratify the collective bargaining agreement or with the, the, one in particular is the Marshfield local 2568 of the firefighters, IAFF. We have come to a tentative agreement with them. It'll be going to the, the select board at, a meeting in two weeks for their consideration. This is a contract that will, that took several years to get settled. And so there are going to be retroactive payments for three years on this. It's going to be a pretty heavy lift. You're probably looking at in the ballpark of $730,000 for the, the three-year contract and another $300,000 in that ballpark for impact on the current fiscal year. So it, it is a significant agreement. I would say in going forward, after this experience, the town should consider having an annual article anticipating any potential collective bargaining agreements and have money set aside so that you won't have such a significant drain on free cash all at once, that you could encumber in articles annually a smaller amount and then apply those articles to the subsequently settled agreements. It is my hope also that collective bargaining agreements will be more, you know, quick, more, more expeditiously settled in the future and so you won't have three years of retro again.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Moran? What, where is the funding source for this?
This would be, I would say it would be free cash.
Free cash?
Yeah.
So is, am I safe enough to say that it's fortunate we have such strong free cash right now because that's, that's a big hunk of money right now?
Yeah. It is, it is fortunate that you have free cash and there, and, yeah. And so your alternative is, is to have a personnel article that you pass annually and put 75 to $100,000 in it and have it sitting there so that, you know, as the contracts roll in, if some are delayed, you can fall back on that and that'll smooth the amount that you'll draw, have to draw on free cash. You don't want to have that dramatic, this kind of a dramatic draw. This is a unique situation.
Okay. Makes sense. Any questions?
Mr. Moran, so I'm not familiar with the process. Who, who sits at the table opposite the union reps for the town in contract negotiations, this one in particular?
So in this one, it was, when I inherited it, it's been me, lawyers for, for the town and union representatives sit on the other side. Sometimes a select board member can, can sit on it as well.
This time, did that happen?
It, when I inherited it, I was in mediation and it was just me.
Okay, thank you.
This has been negotiated for about two years and four months, from what I see, and it expires in July of 2026. So do we have it in the budget for moving forward for the next year? If we're, if we already have known about this for two and a half years?
Yeah.
Why, why isn't that, it's already budgeted in the fire department's budget?
Well, it, it will be budgeted in the FY '27. You'll, you'll, you know, it, I would recommend, I won't be here, but I would recommend that it would be incorporated into the budget.
Moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Any questions from the select board? Okay. Article Three?
Okay. Article Three is moved to amend the Personnel Bylaw Schedule A Compensation Plan, which are the non-union personnel schedule to allow for a 2% salary increase for, for the town, the people under the personnel plan.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Any, any questions from the advisory board? Any questions from the select board?
What's the approximate dollar amount value for the cost of this, this item?
No, I can get it for you. I'll have it for you when we discuss it.
A lot of these don't have costs to them, so it'd be nice to have those so that we can vote on them.
Oh, you'll have, yeah. And it'll, in order for any of these to be acted upon, the motion has to identify the amount of money, the funding source and everything. So you'll have all that available and, yeah, you know, so I'll get that for you. Article Four requests reclassifications of positions, both part, full-time and part-time seasonal positions. Three positions are, are being requested for full-time, the administrator, the assistant veteran agent, the social services coordinator and the assistant director and the council on aging. A social services coordinator, part-time position would have their, their adjustments and a program activities coordinator, as well as library assistant substitute, reference librarian and recreation. I will tell you that I don't, I am not familiar with what your, your customs have been as far as doing reclassifications. My preference as a town administrator has always been to do it at an annual town meeting to make sure that all requests are looked at all at once and, and prioritized accordingly, rather than, than doing this in a, in a fashion where some are coming in in a special and some will come in at an annual. So I don't know, you know, I'll, I'll come up, again, I will have the, the dollar amounts with you. I believe several of these positions are incorporated in the current fiscal year budget and were anticipated in, in the current fiscal year budget. But I will have any additional dollar amounts identified for you.
Great. I'll follow up with you on those things, just to get an idea of when. I have no further questions. Any questions from the advisory board, select board? Okay. Article Five?
Article Five is a free cash article. It, it looks at, it identifies 1.2 million dollars and change worth of spending. However, just as a prequel on this, not all of this will come from free cash because there are other available funds. The two compensated absences funds are sick leave buyouts for recent retirees, one in the, in, in the fire and in the police department. There is an existing compensated absence fund that, that is funded, that can fund those. So those two won't be drawing on free cash. The other, the other numbers, the appro, so that takes about $91,000 out of this article and gets it down to 1.1 and change. The other requests are for funding of school resource officers for the purchase of, of PFAS free turnout gear for the firefighters, for the funding of the facilities management budget in, in those two articles, both town maintenance and school maintenance, and then dredging request for the harbor master and an IT request for switch replacements. So these would all be funded out of free cash. Going forward, I think it would be prudent for the facilities management functions to be funded annually in the operational budget rather than out of free cash in a, in a special town meeting article. I don't think it's efficient and, you know, that'll be in my exit memo recommending that you build that into the, the upcoming fiscal year budget.
Okay. Go ahead.
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
On the budgeting of the, of the maintenance, isn't that pretty common across the Commonwealth, budget maintenance in the operating budget?
Yeah, yeah. You, if, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a recurring request.
Yeah.
It's annual. You should be able to anticipate it. You should be able to identify costs and you should put it in under your tax levy rather than under free cash.
I know Fred knows what he spends, so.
Fred knows.
He has good historical data. The other question I had on the PFAP turnout gear, is this different from the funding we did a year or so ago? Was it the closing for the fire department? Does anybody recall that? Chief?
How's everybody doing?
Great.
So, yeah, the, to put it simply, yes, it is. We, we received $75,000 free cash last year, which got us 22 sets of PFAS free turnout gear, which is, I, I don't want to get into weeds on it, but turnout gear is our lifeline. It's what we wear, our men and women wear when they go into what we call an IDLH, immediate danger to life and health, which is, would be a building that's on fire. So the, these turnout gears composed of two components, a bunk of pants and a coat. And each of those has an inner layer, which is called a thermal barrier. And that's where they're finding these PFAS chemicals are seeping through skin. And so by 2027, it's now law that any manufacturer of turnout gear cannot manufacture any with PFAS chemicals. It's a big initiative in the fire service against rising cancer rates. So last year, we were able to get 22 sets of PFAS free turnout gear, brand new. We got two sets through a grant through the Department of Fire Services and we bought three pairs out of our operating budget. So this money would get everybody one set of PFAS free turnout gear, the entire department. And then we have, every member needs a backup set of gear. And the serviceable life on turnout gear is 10 years. That's recommended. You know, it breaks down and no wear and tear. But this, this money would act, would give us the opportunity to get everyone two sets of gear and everyone have at least one set of PFAS free so they can rotate and then, you know, take care of them per the manufacturer's recommendation. So yes, it is the same money we got last year. And the reason it, it went up is because the prices went up on, on the gear.
And we just decided to split it over a couple of years for purchasing?
Yeah. When I, when we first started looking into replacing gear for everyone, we figured if we got everybody two brand new sets of PFAS free turnout gear, we'd be looking at about $200,000. Right? So this is, not everybody's going to have two sets of PFAS free turnout gear, but everyone will have one and then they'll have a backup set that's within that 10-year serviceable life.
Okay, good. So we shouldn't see this for another six or seven years when we start?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Peter, don't mean to put you on the spot. What, what is the HPE switch? What does that stand for?
You had to, didn't you?
I, I couldn't help myself.
Is Jay here?
Yes, I'm here on Zoom.
Thank you, Jay. Bail me out.
So these are networking switches that direct traffic all over town. Our current switch stock is just coming up on 15 years old. So this will be a long-term replacement.
Got it. Thank you, Jay. Feel good?
Mr. Chair, just one question.
Sure.
For line number seven, for the harbor master, for the dredging of the north and south river, a lot of folks are aware, right, that there's a list of grants that you don't qualify for if you're not in compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. But the question is, what would we realistically qualify for? What was in the door? What wasn't? Is there a real tangible number? Is this an example of one of those grants that we qualified for that was taken away and now we have to pay for out of free cash?
Yes.
Thank you.
I got a question on the school resources offices.
Okay.
Shouldn't that be funded through the annual budget, Peter?
Yeah, yeah. Chief, do you want to jump in?
Sure. It has been scheduled to be funded as part of our regular budget. And it was when we were building the budget this year. However, to make the budget work, 284,000 was backed out of our full-time salary. And we were told that it would be replaced in October. But it should absolutely be part of, and that has been the plan, to have it part of our annual budget so that we don't have to keep coming back for this. I would, I would say that it's very similar to what Peter said, but should be in Fred's budget.
Yeah. What was the, was there a reason why it was backed out of it? Out of the budget, the annual budget?
It was probably to make the numbers work in FY '26. That's, you know, there was a lot of, from what my examination, there was a lot of last-minute changes to.
Move things around?
To move things into the school budget. And, and so some, I, I think this might have been part of what, what got to the number where they wanted to get. But I agree wholeheartedly. Again, this should be a, incorporated into an operational budget because it's recurring. There's always a difference from one town to the other, whether it comes out of a school budget or whether it comes out of a police budget. My preference is that it is a police position, although it is being dedicated to schools. It is primarily a, a police position and should be within the chain of command of the police chief. If he had to reallocate resources for any reason, there should be no question that, that he has command and authority over these officers. So it's my preference that, and when I've built budgets, to put the, the school resource officers into the police department.
Sure, Mr. Miller.
Just a.
Go out to the microphone.
One officer is in the school budget for 10 months of the year, just as a point of clarification. Tom Miller, Assistant Lieutenant Business Finance, Schools. The way it's set up right now, that's not good, is our longtime resource officer, Clary, is funded in the school department budget for 10 months of the year. And the other two have been historically in the police budget, our two other officers.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Okay. One last question on the dredging. 130,000, is that enough to dredge the rivers?
Mike, do you want to take it?
Good evening, Mike DeMeo, Harbor Master. The 133,600 is the 50% match with situat. It was a $206,000 grant that we got and our marshals portion was rescinded because we're not MBTA compliant. We could have spent 32,000, but now we're, I'm asking for a 133 because that's the 50% to match with situat. That money is just for the permitting and engineering to dredge the rivers. We're still a couple of years away from dredging the rivers. So, yeah. It'll take at least 18 months to two years to get the actual permits.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Article Six?
Article Six is a revenue-neutral article, but I think it's an important article for the town of Marshfield to adopt. It, it accepts the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 40, Section 13E, and it allows for the establishment of a special education reserve fund to be used in, in subsequent fiscal years. What this does is allows the town to place monies into a stabilization of fund that can help address anomalies or spikes in school spending related to special education costs. Special education costs can be particularly hard for any community to predict because the particular issues that an individual student might face can be, can range widely in, in costs, whether it's transportation to a special program or residential aspects of programs that individuals need. So a tool that is available is, is a sped reserve fund. Money would be appropriated into the budget when available at an annual or a special town meeting. I would anticipate that what you would do is at, at your spring special town meeting, fund this article and then you could appropriate it either for the, the current fiscal year or for the subsequent fiscal year. Or you could just leave it and bank it. And then if, if you're in a situation that you can avail yourself of it when you see a spike, it allows for a smoothing of the impact of, of unanticipated special education reserves so that, unanticipated special education costs, so that you can address them more responsibly than just having to avail yourself of whatever free cash that you have to meet the need.
Any questions?
Is there a recommendation, I see you can opt to 250. Is there a recommendation how much we should budget annually?
Not right now. Um, I, you know, you could look at where you've been historically in your spends on, on this, and you could identify a number. It's probably in that area that you want to, want to be putting money into. But it really can depend on what your trends are. You could, you know, if your population is reducing, uh, if, if certain individuals are aging out of your system, your costs will be reduced, and you can anticipate that. Uh, you may not have to appropriate as much. But, you, you know, you would look at, um, you'd be, you know, Tom would probably be able to identify uh, what his needs are for the next three or four years, and this could be a helpful tool.
Mr. Miller, would you like to address that, or do you have anything to add?
Um, no, the only thing I would add is there's also, um, circuit breaker funding, which is, allows us to roll over for special education. And over the last ten, fifteen years, it's varied from a million to two million. This year, we rolled over thirty thousand dollars. So, we're dry. And this is, and we spoke about this with Peter, as a mechanism to try to prevent that. Because if we do have, as Peter said, if we did have a couple of students moving to town at a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar clip, um, we don't have that funding source. We get reimbursed a year later. So, that's why that, those unanticipated costs can really be, be damaging.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I do.
Um... Mr. Kelly?
How come the select board isn't incorporated into this? Is this part of the law that was established?
That, yeah, I have, uh, I'm not aware of the select board having to take a vote on this in other, um, towns that I've done.
So, there really isn't any reason for us to be part of this, right?
I don't know. I'll check the statute, but never had a select board have to vote on this.
Yeah, uh, this, uh...
Yeah.
The statute is, um, school committee and town, uh, town meeting.
Yeah, it should be town meeting.
Okay, so we'll eliminate select board from that?
Yeah. The motion, the motion will be corrected.
And, um, in regards to the funding, I believe, like, well, every year, the, the state, uh, gives us X amount of dollars between the towns and the schools. And I, I think this year, uh, was like twenty million, and they kind of dedicate it to certain areas. So, with, with the extra funding the state gives us, Tom, um, would that be something that you could take from that funding from the state, put towards as the two-fifty, if it was allotted?
What?
The...
I'm sure what you're referring, extra, extra funding from the state?
Yeah, the, uh, I'm trying to think of what they...
Chapter seventy, or...
Was it the cherry sheets, or the...
Yeah, so Chapter Seventy is the, is the education funding.
Yeah.
It's approximately fifteen million dollars.
Yeah, is that, and I...
That goes into, that goes into the, the large municipal budget. It doesn't come directly to the, to education.
Okay, so, uh, would I be correct that the governor, when, or the legislature, when they put all of it together, I, I've seen from the schools that they kind of dedicate to certain things you could spend it on, would I be correct about that?
So, check...
Might be circuit breaker that you're referring to.
Yeah.
There's, there's some funding that comes directly to us for special education. That was, that's, that comes in a year after we submit our expenses. So, that's the only direct funding.
Mr. Calvin?
Uh, hi, I, I just want to mention, I, I did look at the statute, Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen E. And the statute actually requires disbursement, some of the reserve funds be by majority vote of the school committee and a majority vote of the board of selectmen. So...
So, it does, so it does say that?
The statute says it.
I've never...
I, I don't remember ever having to do it, like, Mr. Moore says, but the statute actually does say both boards.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Article seven?
Article seven, um, is the, um, Martinson Elementary School roof repair, uh, which seeks, uh, seven-point-eight, seven million eight-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars to be, um, used, uh, for the paying, a cost of roof, roof replacement at the, the Martinson School. This would, uh, is accompanied by a request for a, uh, a debt exclusion, I believe, that would be required to, um, to fund this. The, Tom can probably explain this a little bit more, but the town has been working with the SBA, the School Building Authority, to, um, um, expedite this repair because of its need. And, um, forty, forty-nine percent of the costs of, of the, uh, roof repairs would be, um, paid by the SBA. So, the amount that the town would be borrowing would be lessened by that amount. Tom, do you want to elaborate on it, or...
Uh, good summary. I think, you know, the only thing, a couple of other things to mention is, you know, we, we did start this process. We, we submitted for Furnace Brook and Markinson back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, the Furnace Brook, Furnace Brook, uh, roof was, was selected by the MSBA. Um, we did a similar scenario, uh, with the MSBA on the, on the Furnace Brook roof. Um, we, during the time Furnace Brook was selected, and then when we were able to find, to resubmit Martinson, they generally don't take two projects at the same time. Um, the, the year, number of years the roof had to be, uh, number of years the roof had to be in existence went from, shifted from twenty to twenty-five. So, then we got bumped back a couple more years. Um, as, as Peter said, we've been meeting with MSBA frequently over the last couple of years, and then they did a thorough walkthrough in August of, uh, of twenty-four, August of twenty-three, sorry. And then this was, uh, submitted for schematic design at the April Town Meeting. That process has been, has been completed. Uh, there's a full hundred-and-thirty-seven-page document that we're going to post online on our, on our website that, for the whole, the whole submission process. So, um, everything else is exactly what Peter had said.
Okay. Any, any questions from the project board?
I have a question. Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure, Jack.
Jack Griffin, eighty-nine B Street, Chair of the Capital Budget. Um, any clarity on what's an emergency? Because special town meeting is for only emergency items. That's what by law say. So, number six, I really don't think is emergency. Number seven could be, but I'm not sure. And I don't know who makes the determination of, of it. But what I, we'll also ask a question on seven is, we are not with the MBTA right now, and will we be issued the funding? Because we're not compliant. There's the states holding back all the funds. So, then you go further down through the book, and there are other items in there that, um, don't reach emergency spending. So, I, I don't know who makes the decision on it, but that's the bylaw, and that's the way it's written. And that's all I wanted to say. If I could get an answer to that, that would be great.
So, I can, I can chime in. I checked, before this meeting, I checked in, I, I reviewed your charter and your bylaws. And Section ninety-five dash thirteen in the Marshfield Code, you know, talks about the submission of capital plans in November um, by each department. Um, Section ninety-five dash nineteen, um, refers to capital expenditures at special town meetings should be of an, of an emergency nature.
Right.
Okay? Remaining articles that are non-capital in nature, there is no provision in, in either the bylaws or the charter that they be emergent.
Strictly for capital budget items, which this, this one would fall under.
Yeah.
It has to be an emergency. So, that would be, so, when it gets on here, who determined to put it in the book? How does it get in there? How does it make a determination and say, before close to town meeting, and it says, this is an emergency, we need to put this in the book?
Mr. Moore, do you know?
I can, I can take it. So, I don't believe that the, um, custom of the board has been, it, has been to adhere to whether it's an emergency or not, um, in accordance with the bylaw. On the capital budget items, you've got this, and you've got some articles in, section, in number, in the thirties, the DPW's requesting several, uh, vehicles. They may not, may or may not be emergent. You would have to make that determination if you were going to recommend, the, the, you know, the spending on those, on those vehicles, because some may be emergency and some may not. The, the nature of this article, um, being emergency or not, is to make sure that you have funding in place once you get, um, adjacent to the time that the school building administration considers your, your, um, request. And they want to, one of the things they're going to know, want to know is, is the town securing funding to match? And, and...
Right, and if you don't get a match, because the MBTA situation that we're in, we would get stuck with the whole seven million dollars.
You, no, you wouldn't go forward with the project, obviously, because you can't, you know, you wouldn't be...
But they're voting on it in October, it says here.
Right, but the amount that would be funded would be the matching amount in the override. You wouldn't be asking for the higher...
So, so, I, I, I'm not here to be debating, I'm just getting clarity here. So, if they say, we're going to give you three-point-nine, let's just say, three-point-nine million from the mass school system there, um, now it's going to go to the town meeting, and it's going to pass town meeting, and then it's going to go to, um, a vote. Am I correct on the override?
Correct, right.
And the state at the end says, now we voted it, and we voted it all in, and the state at the end says, no. What happens then?
Then you can rescind your vote as far as the authorization. You don't, if, if you're not going to get the matching funds, you don't have to issue the debt.
Right, so as far as an emergency goes, this, this doesn't, this will take forever. You're going to have two town meeting, then you're going to get to the next, you know, vote for it. So, this is, in, in my opinion, then, that this is not an emergency, and it should not be on, on here. And, again, I have to say, how did it get on here as an emergency? Who makes that determination? Is it yourself? Is it the school committee?
It wasn't, it wasn't, there was a request by the school committee to place it, and we honored the request.
So, is this the place that you can take it off? Or is it not? We're having a discussion here.
It wouldn't be taken up...
And the other thing is, one thing...
So, if I can explain.
Go ahead.
What you can do is if you don't believe it's an emergency, and if it's front, it's in front of the Capital Budget Committee, and if you, you feel it doesn't comply with the, the, uh, the bylaw, you can vote for it not to be recommended.
Right, but meanwhile, it's going forward to town meeting...
It's going forward to town meeting with the recommendation not to pass because it's not in compliance.
Right, so, I guess what I'm saying is that it can go forward to town meeting. And I'm not against the article, I'm against what we're, how it got on here. Because town meeting, ninety percent of the time will vote for it because they'll have enough people that want the school system in place. So, I think it needs to be nailed beforehand. I don't, I, I think the select board, I don't know if you got a chance to go through this with him and understood what I'm talking about. They should be making a term, the determination so that when it comes to capital budget, I know that it is a capital budget, it's an emergency item. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, uh, we haven't exhausted comments from the, the advisory board or the select board. Can we wait before we go to the public?
Sure, yeah, so, let's go to advisory board.
So, I, I guess, as long as, uh, Capital Budget Chairman, uh, made the point, where, where does this fall in the Capital Budget, uh, list of priorities? Is this on the list of priorities? Are there leaks in the roof right now? Is it, is it an emergency? I, I didn't get that from the discussion we just had.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, there's a couple of things there. It's, it's been on our capital budget plan, on, on the school's capital budget plan for almost ten years. And it's, and it was on our submission last year for approximately four-and-a-half million dollars, based upon just some, where we thought it was going to end up. So, it's been on our plan, on our capital budget.
But is, is there risk to the building? I mean, that, that's really what we're talking about in an emergency.
I wouldn't want to be the one to say no and then have something happen if we delay this another year.
Is DPW here? Did, oh, Fred?
Yeah, I mean, the, uh, I think it's an emergency. The, um, that, that's the worst roof in the whole system, our whole inventory. And it's so bad, there's like sixty skylights on the roof.
Fred, can you go to the mic? Yeah, Fred, can you go?
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. Uh, Fred Russell, Facility Manager, I'm also a resident at Ninety-two Module Street. I think this is an emergency. Um, the roof last year, I mean, it leaks, consistently leaks. Skylights are, are, are going back to nineteen sixty-three vintage, they're plastic. They, they're, they're cracking. We actually, I actually shrink-wrapped them, uh, with the white, but, you know, things you do for boats. It made it somewhat of an improvement. Uh, there's excessive ponding on the roof. Um, we had issues with water getting in the building last year, and we, we actually had, had to do some mold abatement to do that, to take care of that. So, I consider it is emergency, and you look at the timeframe. We have to get it done in a summer break. So, if we get it, the thought process is, we, we, we're following, the MSBA gave us, gave us the, uh, go ahead with the schematic. So, we're, we're just following the timeline, as soon as we possibly can get this roof done. So, if we don't do it next, this, next summer, we have to wait another summer, so...
Thank you, Fred. Any other questions?
Well, this is the, uh, uh, in the spring meeting, this is where we voted for, uh, the million-dollar assessment on the schematic, and that's been completed. That's a hundred-and-thirty-seven-page document.
Yes, yes.
I, I was just curious, have you read that, Fred? Hundred-and-thirty-seven pages?
I've, I've, I've briefed on it, yeah, they actually, uh, the design engineer...
I'm more curious, did we get a value for that million dollars that we spent in three, two or three months for this eight-million-dollar roof?
I don't think we paid a million dollars for it.
Yeah, it ended up being a million.
No.
No?
No.
Four-fifty, I believe, somewhere in there, so...
I'm thinking, I might be mistaken, I thought it was around a nine mil- million. Okay.
Yeah, one of the things when, when we went for the approval is that if we didn't, if we underestimated it, it wouldn't be grant-eligible. So, we made sure that we, we had a, we had a good number in there that we're going to come under, so...
Got it. And that'll be reimbursed also.
I'm going to, Peter?
Yeah, just a question, are we...
Thank you, sorry. Uh, is there a timeframe when the reimbursement from the school board authority, school building authority, excuse me, uh, where that could run out? We can risk if we push it too long, notwithstanding the concerns that Fred has mentioned. We have to act in a certain timeline to be able to be, uh, allowed to receive that match from the MSBA?
Exactly, that's, and that was one of the other points, too. Once you were invited and the process begins, there are certain deadlines, certain thresholds. My computer completely just crashed on me.
That's okay, just generally.
Um, a hundred-and-twenty days after, there's a hundred-and-twenty-day limits where you have to respond and, and, and...
Take action effectively? Okay, thank you.
So, that's, that's one of the reasons it's obviously on this warrant.
Understood, thank you.
When are the documents going to be posted online? And, uh, this is only SD phase? Is there a DD and a, a CD phase of the drawings?
Correct.
That also have to be paid for?
That's going forward, yes.
And those already been paid for?
Not yet, no.
Okay, and when, when is the, uh, when can we be posting this? The SD's online?
I was going to try to post them right now, but...
Oh, okay.
My laptop's there, so...
Soon.
Um, I will, I'll, they'll be up tomorrow morning. We'll put a, right on MBSD.org, you know, via line.
Good.
Yeah, uh, so, question for town council. The, the MBTA status of the town, does SBA fall under that? Is that, are those funds that can be withheld? I didn't think they could be, but...
Not, not at the present, not at present.
Okay, all right, thank you. Questions from the select board? Okay. Ms. Keith?
Pam Keith, Smoke Hill Ridge. Um, I was surprised to see the language already built in that says contingent upon a, a debt exclusion or override vote. Town meeting doesn't have to approve an override vote, right? That's like the selectmen are the ones who put it on the warrant. So, this leads me, though, to believe that if the override was to fail, that this vote then becomes moot or no. So, I'm wondering, is there a Plan B? And my, my question that's tied to it is, is it impossible for us to include Plan B in the current language now? I realize it's not written here now, but, um, you know, wouldn't you have, you, can you vote two, kind of two funding sources at one time?
Yeah, so, the one way that I know that you could, if, if the override failed, you could call another special town meeting, put an article together to fund it through available funds without an override, either bond it or, or, um, use free cash or stabilization or what have you. I don't think we could amend this on the floor. I think it would, it would be seen as an unfriendly amendment to, uh, take out the override language in the current article. So, I think your Plan B would be to have another special town meeting should the, should the... the override fail.
And, well, and then my follow-up question is, is if the override was ever to fail, is there a problem with the timeframe, which is spelled out here, that there's going to be construction between June and September? I mean, would you have time to do anything like that? Time to re-vote?
Well, you'd set the override vote, you know, we're probably setting the override vote sometime in November. You'd probably, you could schedule a special town meeting. There's an emergency provision in, in the charter that allows the selectmen to call an emergency town meeting and could be done for this purpose a couple of weeks after if an election failed, and you could do it that way. So, you could do it and not lose your construction season.
And so, then, just one last question is, is, if this was ever to be funded in a different way, like net, in, when we do the budget next April, is that too late? It's, it's very close to a June construction date, within two months.
I'm trying to remember, I had, I had a timeline.
If it's 120, if it's 120 days from SBA approval, and they do that at the end of this month, I don't think it would work.
Three months, you're probably looking, you know, December, sometime in January.
Okay. So, SBA approval is now?
Yeah, like, late January, it would have to be funded.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Eric Lee. Oh. Switch.
Steve Lynch, 50th Central Street. So, this is a great number. Where did you get this number from?
It's in the 137-page document, the full budget's in there as well.
So, who wrote up the estimate to do this roof for $7 million?
This is my town meeting. The OPM and our architect.
So, we're going to go into another no-bid contract. Marshall's famous, no-bid bid. It is. But the, but the bidder's going to know what we've appropriated for the, for the job, right? So, they know that they can bid up to $8 million, right?
School building authority regulations.
So, I would suggest that you plan on the override failing and stop trying to put more burden on the taxpayers of Marshfield and start budgeting this within the, the means of the town, the money that we get, and you could, you could bond this over a long period of time.
I think Fred could probably talk to this. We do have two other roofs in town that are close to needing this same process and need about a little over $1 million. We'd appreciate your support at town meeting and capital budget because it's going to go down this road.
How long are we going to go on fixing five elementary schools?
That's, that's not the, I meant, that's not the article we're discussing, Mr. Lynch.
What?
That's not the article we're discussing right now. This isn't a place for debate. Let's not debate.
Well-
I'm giving you an opportunity to speak, so say your piece.
Oh, thank you.
I can, I can take it away from you if you'd like.
Go ahead. So, anyway, we have to stop putting this burden on the taxpayers of Marshfield. There's just no reason for these overrides. We have, we don't have a revenue problem, we have a spending problem. That's just all there is to it. And we have to start spending money like a homeowner has to spend to budget their home. And this is ridiculous, putting overrides out there. Thank you.
Mr. Pesavich.
Thank you, Joe Pesavich, real quicky. TPO roofing, what is that?
It's an acronym for, I can't, I can't think of the name.
You can't think of the name of that? Okay. The other thing is, how come you just don't put the word override in the article? You know, how many people know that payment of interest and principal and any borrowing from the limitations of MGL 59, section 21, so just say override.
One last question.
Sure.
For the-
Andrew, does this seem like a fair estimate for an industrial roof replacement, in your opinion?
Andrew Stewart, building commissioner, as much as I'd love to be able to answer that question, I can't. More on the regulatory side and not so much on the money side of things.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No problem.
Sure. Kelly?
In regards to what the MSBA is requiring out of your town, could we have gotten estimates outside of trying to get a, the MSBA without, you know, getting their money? And maybe we could have had a different, maybe a better price? And is that still too late right now to do?
It's, it's still going to be big. So, this is, this is the, the, in order to go through the accelerated repair program, which is why we're receiving the 49%, 49.3%, the MSBA assigns our OPM and assigns a, an architect. And, you know, they, they, they go through a rigorous process and then assign, they have, I think they have a 80-something-
But that, but that's if we go through the MSBA, right?
Correct.
All right. Have we tried to go, have we tried, have we tried going outside of the MSBA and trying to get our own estimates in what's needed and see what we come up with there? Are we allowed to do that?
I'm, I'm not necessarily sure, but you don't, if we went outside and went through that process, we're go, we're going to pay the full $8 million, $7, $8.
Well, we don't know it's going to be there. It could be lots, right?
Yeah. But, I mean, this came in line with what we were estimating in the beginning, just from, from, so, similar projects that have been done in schools across, there's a big spreadsheet, similar projects, and it falls in line.
So, I mean, would it hurt us going forward? As you said, there's a couple of other school roofs that may be coming up. Would it hurt us going forward to get, just bids from other people to see where we're at with the roofs? And, and, and then we can go through MSBA and see where we're at with them.
With, with those other roofs, if we get that process, we can look at that, but this is, this is pretty much too far along at that point to start looking elsewhere.
I get that. It's just, I, I understand, I understand what everybody's saying here in regards to cost. I think the whole thing is, I think, when we're going through the MSBA and you're saying it's their process, well, that, I think that, my understanding is that process may be costing us, costing us money that may, may necessarily not need to spend possibly. And without going, trying to do something different than the MSBA in finding other contractors to take a look at it and see what we can do, it may, there may be a, a, a cost difference there.
The construction was, is that $6 million roughly? Yeah. So, like, the, the actual construction is in the $6 million range. That's what's going to be the main bid, and that's going to be a competitive bid. That's going to go out, and it's going to be a bid process. So, we're hopeful it comes in a lot less than 7.8.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows what, what the numbers are working for right now.
It depends. I mean, this is our, this is our, this will be our fourth project that I've, that I've been here in Marshfield that we've done with the MSBA. Everyone's come on under bid because it's competitive.
In regards to our, our portion of funding, Peter, would you, as you spoke of earlier, I believe, but do you think there could have been another funding source instead of going through an override on this?
I think it would be really tight to do that. I couldn't, I couldn't commit to it. But if, if your alternative is, if your override, if the debt exclusion, which is, quite frankly, this isn't an override, this is a debt exclusion, which is, is the term of art for this kind of expenditure. If this were to fail, if the vote were to fail, and you wanted to go to, you know, available funds, you could cobble together free cash, you know, and, and-
CPC?
No.
That fit at all?
CPC wouldn't work. But, you know, you would, you'd be, you would look at what you could cobble together and, and see if you could fund it. Fund your portion of it in another way. It would be tight. We're looking at several million dollars' worth of free cash expenditures in, in this budget, separate from this article. So, I think this would throw us over what we have in free cash. But, you know, there's, there, free cash and sources of revenue, non-recurring sources of revenue come in at various times. And, you know, and if you want to take another shot at it through non-debt exclusion manners, you could try it. But you'd be cobbling things together.
All right.
Okay.
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding your question, Eric. So, right now, we're going through the MSBA accelerated repair program where the reimbursement from the state is 49.3%. And the estimate from their engineers is $8 million. So, was your question for Mr. Miller, if there's a world or scenario that exists where we go outside the MSD, MSBA to do our own bid and our own study, and if there could be a potential total cost that's $4 million or less?
Well, I don't know, maybe. The, the only thing is, I don't see the harm in going out and seeing what someone outside of the MSBA requirements would do us any harm in seeing what the number comes up with.
Okay. So, you're concerned, is that maybe what the state is estimating is off by double?
I think, according to what Tom is saying, is that they're following the MSBA requirements, and I think that may be an added component to the cost.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking that if we didn't, if we went to a, outside of that and looking at our own, somebody to give us their own estimates in regards to what needs to be done to the roof, maybe it wouldn't be as expensive, but I don't know because we never done that, so.
Okay. And your question is if the break-even point could be greater than the 49.3% reimbursement?
Yeah, I guess you can look at it that way. I mean, find out, you know, that's all I'm doing.
Okay.
Seeing what the costs are, you know. I mean, honestly, as you bring it up, the, when I was going through the requirements here in regards to it, the, there were other possible things that I don't think we may not be looking at going forward if we had to do another thing. You can get extra points in regards to adding, wanting to take the, the pressure off and the money. And it's one thing I asked Peter about, and I emailed Tom on in regards to it, neither one can give me an answer. That was newly reform, newly formed regional school district up to six points, and then high-efficiency green school program up to two points, dress practices for routine and capital management up to two points, overlay zoning, whatever that is, up to two points, and renovation reuse of existing facilities up to five points, and establishing a maintenance trust fund up to one point. So, the only is that, I asked if they could explain what those are because those, if, if those aren't too bad, I, I understand that some of them may, may not be implements, some of them we may be able to possibly, but it would have added points on that would have reduced that cost as well. So, I mean, I'm just looking at, you know, where we, where we are, are spending and, and where we can save possible money. I have, I said, I asked in regards to those matters, and didn't get a response in regards to what, what other things we can implement on the MSBA side of it, and didn't get a response. But the only is that I see no harm either in regards to putting it out to a, a non-MSB bid to see what they say in regards to the costs.
The, the problem that you have in public construction is prevailing wage. Prevailing wage drives up the cost of public construction, so that comparing it to, to private construction is, it, it's not, it's apples and oranges. And so, you're, you know, in library projects, you're paying $700 a square foot for, for public construction because you're forced to pay prevailing wage. And whether we do it inside the SBA or outside the SBA, the fact that it is a public building requires us statutorily to pay prevailing wage, and that drives up the cost. You know, I, I share your pain as far as using the SBA, you know, being forced to use the SBA circumstances. I, I hate that the SBA requires you to have owners, project managers, on top of your own personnel to monitor construction. I think that adds an extra layer. But that's part of the game to get the reimbursement because they didn't like the work that some cities and towns were doing overseeing construction on SBA-funded projects. So, they've imposed additional costs with OPMs since the mid-2010s. But, you know, I, I'm fairly confident because of, you know, my experience in dealing with several different municipal construction projects, your, your costs are going to be higher than what you would get in a private, commercial setting, just because of prevailing wage.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Chris.
Eric?
I just had one, one additional question. Can we do a constructibility review on the documents and an estimate check? Not a, not a, you know, bid, but just have another company just do a review of the drawings and make sure that, you know, it complies. Is it 149A that this needs to comply with? The bid process, 149?
Think so.
So, I, I mean, I've been in construction for 33 years and built dozens of schools. You know, I, I can review the drawings and probably come up with a fairly, you know, straightforward budget check on this, just, you know, within a week or so. But, you know, I, it's, it's not that complicated, but-
We can put that up to Mr. Miller and-
If, once the drawings are up, we can review it. What's the scope? Does it include blocking? Does it include skylights? Does it include redoing all the flashings, all the mechanical equipment?
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of scope that needs to be reviewed in that dollar amount. If you go to a TPO roof versus a rubber roof, black rubber, which is, which is on there now, you may be able to go to a different type of roofing material and reduce the costs. The TPO is typically a white rubber, white, white plastic roof. That may not be needed. We might be able to, a black carlisle or firestone roof as an option. But as, we can look at it with respect to different options and provide some input to the, to the group.
Yeah, I like that idea. I like it.
Is, on the school building authority requirements that you say, I mean, do they have requirements in regards to the roofs, or is it just pretty much the oversight of the construction of it?
I missed that last sentence.
On the, on the, the school building authority in regards to some of the requirements and requirements that you mentioned that we got to follow, do they have anything in regards to the roof, in regards to that, they want certain materials or anything like that? Or is it pretty much just the construction end of it that they want overseen?
We've had, we've had multiple meetings with everyone involved. You know, they are, the, the OPM is kind of our, our liaison while we're discussing it with the architect. And, you know, we try to, try to come to a middle ground and, you know. But I, I welcome your review. That'd be, that'd be great.
All right. Thanks, guys. Ms. Lynch?
So, my questions to the select board. And actually, I'm, all my questions that I'm going to have tonight are going to be directed to the select board. So, Eric, I was just wondering about process here because last night you guys voted not to set a date for an override for this. So, why is this even on here as an override? Right? Last night you voted no. I, I didn't, I actually wasn't sitting in the room when you did it, but you did do that, right?
We didn't, we didn't vote on it. We, we passed over that item because I hadn't had a chance to talk to the school superintendent about availability of possible dates for it. So, we're going to address it at a future meeting.
Okay. So, again, you know, it's, this should be coming out of the budget. The job, don't, you know, the job needs to be done, it needs to be done. It's not a question of doing the job, the question is how are you going to fund it? And it shouldn't be overrides. And I'm pretty sure that the board's majority does not want overrides either. So, I don't understand why you just don't remove this from the warrant because you have the authority to do that because you had to put it on there. Thanks.
All right. Article eight.
Article eight is a CPC article that would appropriate $989,363 from CPC funds, $258,980 from Open Space, and $730,382 from undesignated reserves for construction costs for improvements to this South River Park that's been requested by the Open Space Committee and the CPC.
Okay. Any questions from advisory board? Any questions from select board? Any questions from select board?
I think she has a presentation, doesn't she?
Oh.
I'm just here to answer questions or elaborate on anything.
I'd, I'd like to, to hear what she has to say.
Absolutely. If.
Do you wanna take all of them, Sue?
This is probably a little more fun than more. Um, my name's Susan Karen, I'm the chair of the open space committee. Um, I, I know that some of you haven't seen this project at all, um, so, so I'll just give a little context to it. So this is the, um, the article, so the expansion to the South River Park is, the existing park was built and completed in two thousand twelve. The, it's part of a larger strategy of the open space plan, of the open space committee came up with around two thousand six. We saw opportunities along the South River corridor in the business area between three A and Willow Street. A lot of degraded properties that were for sale for a long time and weren't selling. And they, we thought, well, this would be a good opportunity to perhaps look at purchasing some of these and creating a walking path. What drove it in the beginning is its conservation minded. The, it's well known that land that abuts the rivers are, they play an important role in the health of the rivers. They can prevent pollution runoff and the, the land, the way, the condition of the land affects that. It also becomes, if it's, if it's cared for properly, it's habitat for animals that live along, the wildlife along the rivers. So there's, that's part of, uh, that's a conservation goal. Those areas are heavily regulated because of their value. Um, and a lot of these properties were built long before there was a wetlands protection act. So this is part of a strategy to improve the ecological conditions along the South River and create an opportunity for passive recreation and access to the river. And because of the topography, you could easily create AD accessible walking trails there. So the first parcel that we were able to get, we created the, the South River Park, which was two parcels that were combined. And we, the goal was to always hopefully get the one next door, twenty one sixty Ocean Street. And we've been looking at that for close to two decades and finally it, you know, we were able to make a deal with the landowner.
Sue, is that where the old tire, uh, facility was, the auto repair?
Um, no, that's, you're talking about on the other side of the Shell station. The one, the twenty one sixty is on the corner, almost to the corner of three A, one thirty nine. It is next to a gas station, I think it's the, it used to be Viking, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, Prime.
It's Prime now, right? It's, it's that little piece, it's a, a little, a little under a half an acre of land. That had an, an aging structure on it that, that it was the town bond for a long time. It was the town bond, it was used for, to store automotive, um, had a mo- a lot of different commercial uses. And I think at one point it might have been a residence way back, but I can't swear to that. So, um, you know, you, you're looking at a degraded property to begin with, so you know that to try to construct anything, you're not starting with vacant land. And so that's what drives the cost in this. It's a half an acre and we're looking at close to a million dollars. So I've given all of you, actually you didn't get it, Mr. Roland, but you weren't here when I passed out, um, little, um, summaries of the project and all the supporting documentation, the line item budgets, the proposals, so that you'll know where these numbers actually came from. So, so what we're looking for now is we wanna complete this park and it, it will be beautiful. It's down, there's actually, um, a schematic of it over there and you've got, you have actually maps of it, um, that I've handed out. So, so it's environmental, it's ADA access and also improving the aesthetics of the area can't harm the business community. I mean, I think people are pretty tired of looking at, at that and we, they, um, feel it drags down the area, so we'll be really proud to make that happen. What we've done in this project, we, we, it's, we've shown restraint and design, we're just trying to, it's very basic lawns, walkways, ADA pathways and, and seating and shade trees and landscaping. Unfortunately, what's expensive is the fact that it is a degraded property. And so of that, it's the actual construction costs are eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. A hundred and twenty two of that is just demolition of existing thing, demolition and removal of the debris. So, um, that's unfortunate. And the other thing that's, that raises the cost is we did soil testing before we bought the property because it's next to a gas station. So we did, um, a phase two twenty one E subsurface soil borings and that revealed, um, coal ash in the property, which is not uncommon in, in urban soils. It's not reportable to DEP, but it does require a soils management plan for best manager, management practices, you wanna cap that soil. So the cost to do that capping, we have to put a geo textile marker layer down over the soils and then three foot, a three foot cap, clean field cap. And so that's added soils and the geo textile layer product is expensive as well. Um, and the, the purpose for that is if someone ten years from now is digging and they hit that, they'll know there's something there. Anybody in construction would be aware of that. So that's what's driving the cost. The rest of it is, um, the cost of the pathways, um, you know, bituminous concrete, ADA, accessible, um, the grassing, the, the, um, the, the sloping, um, and just a lot of landscaping. Because it's, it's really, there's nothing of value on the site except for some trees at the street side, which we will retain and then some on the river, on the riverbank itself. The rest of it will be grass, native plantings to attract wildlife, um, for flood control. And there'll be, um, stormwater management plan is to keep, um, everything is grain to drain. And we have a feature where there's a circle at the end there near the river. I don't know if you can see that from there, but, um, it's a circular seating area that's permeus pavers and that's part of the stormwater man- management plan where, um, it'll be graded to drain into there. So that will absorb some, um, some of the, the runoff, um, before it gets to the river. And then there's one other feature where it's, there's a underground pipe underneath a, um, walkway. It's a low point where water, groundwater comes up. And so that will also be handled, managed on site. That's the goal is low impact design, no impacts to the river. And so that's really what's driving the design. Um, and timeline is if we get funding at town meeting, and this is a CPC funded project and they've been great, they've funded all of, to date, we've had two and a half million dollars worth of CPC funds to do the Greenway. Cause this is our fourth acquisition and improvements to the Pratt property, trails over there, kayak launch. So this has been a long, you know, a well supported, we couldn't do any of this without CPC. If we get, get approval at town meeting, then we'll put the project out to bid. We'll start working on the bid process right after, um, town meeting with the goal of putting the bids out right after Christmas. We're told that that's a good time to put out construction bids because people aren't busy and they'll have the, the time to get, um, to respond. We will not put the price, the budget on the bids so that we can possibly get lower bids. So, um, if we get, then, then the plan is we will have it under contract by late winter, early spring and construction can begin. And the estimated completion date would be the following spring of twenty twenty seven. All the hardscape, um, uh, fill, uh, earthwork, grading, demolition would be done over the summer and the fall, stabilize the, the grass and then do the final plantings in the spring. And the reason for that is there's a better success rate in the spring and there's more availability of plant material. So that's it.
Awesome, thank you. Mr. McLauren.
With the Veterans Park, that is gonna be beautiful.
Yes, that's.
That, that area right in there, yeah.
Right, that, that's a big reason why we wanna do this is with, it's, it's such an eyesore and it's really detracts from the veterans lower, that the honor roll area and they.
It'd be beautiful.
Yeah, we're, um, they're very happy, they've, everybody has wanted to do this for years, so, um, we're hoping we can do it.
Great, one question, a, a couple comments, I guess. I read through this, it's pretty extensive, w- w- well done engineering. What did we pay for the property a couple of years ago?
Um, two hundred thousand.
And then another million for this?
Yeah.
Um. When we bought the property, that was the plan, the master plan?
Yes, that was always the plan and, um, and we knew that the soils is issues upfront because we were, um, actually it was town council said you should test this before you buy it and that was a good thing. So we knew what we were getting ourselves into, um.
These, these are all great projects, being on, being involved with the town a little more over a few years. What I've noticed is that trend is we purchase something, it would have been nice to know, we're gonna buy this property, we're, we're probably gonna estimate a million dollars to make the buck a few years down the road.
Right.
And the, and the other question I have is specifically about that area, do we have any idea what the foot traffic will be?
We get a lot of people there now and I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, when we have that whole, that side of it cleaned up, we'll even get more visibility. The park is used a lot, I mean, we have a, the park is maintained by DPW does the lawns, um, the veterans do the honor roll area. And we have a group, I'm actually the chair of the Friends of the South River Park and Greenway, and we have a big volunteer group, so we're down there all the time. And it's surprising how many people, a lot of people walk there, people come, they're regular visitors there every day. Um, you know, we'd like to see more, but there's, it's, it's busy, there's people in and out of there all day.
Is there, is there any kind of in, in your, in your world, kind of a ratio of how much foot traffic justifies these kind of projects?
I guess we haven't really put that, that to, I mean, we, we want people to use it. And the, and the idea there is, one of the reasons we think this is an important spot is there's a lot of people that, a lot of high density housing nearby and people walk there. So we're, we're always looking for ways to get more attention. Um, we've had yoga at the park now, we did a pilot program of a couple of concerts. And so that's what we're, we're trying to do more programming and, and we're looking for ways to do that because we want to increase its visibility and see it used. And I'm hoping that this, um, improvement will even draw more people in. And the other thing I'm, I'm thinking we should do some landscape changes to the streetscape because a lot of people drive right by it and they don't see it until they've already gone by. So I think some of the shrubbery that was there was beautiful in the beginning and now I think we need to reconsider that and cut some of it back so that people, I, I find that myself, it's easy to go right by the entrance. And so that, and it, nobody's gonna go up and turn around unless they were really intending to go there. So we're looking for ways to have the, the streetscape look more inviting and more, more awareness.
But you would have to drive to this.
You drive, well, people drive and walk, there are people who then walk in distance.
Can access it from the backside?
From, oh, so this.
Walking standpoint.
Um, there's a sidewalk, you can walk and you can, and there's parking, there's parking for ten cars.
Right.
So, um, but there's no additional parking on this. There is a driveway entrance that's existing and that's a really dangerous, um, you know, in and out there. And there's no need for adding more impervious surfaces, which you don't wanna do in a riverfront. Um, so, and there, there's no need to add the expense either when we have enough parking on the other side. And when we've had events there, there's overflow parking too, the grass was designed for, for extra parking. So when we have lots of people there, like the Veterans Day parade and we've had, when we have workdays where we have twenty people, twenty cars, we can accommodate, so there's no need to do that. So that driveway will be blocked off and only for emergency use for, um, town vehicles for maintenance or in an emergency, so.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, I hope?
Well, you did a very thorough job, I'm just saying, you know, to be honest, I like parks and I open space, but there's nice to haves, haves to haves and there's budgets, you know, and spendings.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to kinda get a clear picture, a full picture of the.
Well, this should be hopefully the, well, the last big expenditure. There's no more acquisitions that are needed to create this Greenway. I have a plan, you'll have it in your, in your packet where the, the next step is to try to get easements for other properties along the river. And we've talked to some of those people over the years so that we can continue the walking trail. The goal would be to get all the way from Route three A to Willow Street. And when you get to Willow Street, you can just walk up a short distance, get onto the Pratt Farm property and have, is another contiguous tail, trail that gets you to the Bridle Trail and the river. So you get a really nice view of the South River. Um, and that's our next, that's the next step after we do this.
We're fortunate to have people like you in our town, I'm sure.
I'm.
But, but there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of.
It, it, there's, there's a lot. And, and hopefully we won't, you know, there's ninety thousand dollars in a contingency budget here and hopefully we won't need all of that. And hopefully we'll come in under budget, but you know, you have to be realistic with construction, can't guarantee anything, so.
Sure, thanks.
All right. Um, you might as well stay, Article nine.
All right.
Do you, uh, do you wanna say a few things about Article nine?
Um, Article nine, um, actually that's probably more, I, I would love to.
That's more.
A few, it's kind of self explanatory, I've tried to do really thorough explanations in the article on the warrants, so, um, if people are familiar with that. So this is, um, you know, two point four million dollar property. Um, this is, um, probably one of the most urgent acquisitions, I feel like, I've been doing this for a long time. This is really at risk and because of its location, there is nothing else, there's not a lot of land like this left to save. Its location is what really is driving this and also the extensive damage that will be done to the property in order to build the ten acre, the ten lot subdivision. We tried to buy this land, we were aware of it before it went through permitting, talking to the original owner and, and it wouldn't have, you know, it would have appraised obviously much less than that. But, um, you know, I thought we were, I was making some progress and then she decided to pursue development, you know, a lot of family trusts and things like that, they wanna maximize their value. And so, um, a developer was, she has an arrangement with them and they've got it approved for ten, ten, one acre house lots. And that's what drives the value, we had an appraisal done and, and that's the full appraised value. Um, and we weren't able to get any lower than that with, um, negotiating that. So this property, it, it's eighteen point eight acres sitting in the middle of all protected open space. There's a hundred and thirty nine acres surrounding three sides of that property that are permanently protected by Audubon and the town with conservation restrictions. And so then this eighteen acres into it, it's a hundred and fifty nine acre, it's been functioning as a world wildlife sanctuary. Um, and if you go in there and cut through this property, uh, it's, it's called fragment, the fragmentation of open space is the worst thing you can do for habitat loss. It's the major contributor to habitat loss. The damage will not just be on that, that lot itself, but once you clear, in order to build the subdivision, it's gonna be clear cut. There's gonna be forty four thousand cubic yards of fill, that's two thousand, two hundred truckloads. So imagine that on this site. So no trees, there is wetland impacts to it, there's three different wetland resource areas on the property, there's a wetland crossing required, which are, um, not typically allowed except in situations like this because it's a development and to access the backland. Conservation Commission doesn't have a lot of leeway and they have to permit certain things. So, um, you know, it's, it's not, it's gonna be, um, very damaging to that parcel and then it'll be damaging to wildlife corridors, ecosystem damage. Because when you cut all those trees down, you damage the tree canopy all around the shade, which affects not only that site, but the ecosystems around it on the other parcels. You're cutting through tree roots, um, the damage would be, um, and it's, it's hard to imagine all the impacts to wetlands that won't have it off property, um, you know, impacts as well. Um, not to mention the aesthetics of, this is like a green corridor along Route three A that's beautiful. And then to, to cut through this in such an extreme way, um, is what is concerning to us and why we really aggressively pursued trying to acquire this land.
Question. Sure.
So, uh, when, when you negotiated this price, were, were the people in the negotiations aware that there's no public water to this development? They, they're gonna have to use wells for each house?
Um, actually that, when it was finally permitted, they were, they have to, they were, in order to get the permit, they were required to bring in a water main. So that was ultimately, initially they were looking for wells, but they, they didn't succeed in getting that through, it was either, I don't know if it was ZBA or planning, but they did not win that argument, they were gonna have to. So that's, when, when they appraise these properties, what they do is they take a, um, they review, um, they do a cost analysis of similar properties of what lots would cost, you know, developed lots, what they would cost, they do a comparison to this. And that is the value of like the retail value and then they take back out the cost of construction. So they, you know, it's up here and then they, you know, the cost of the fill, the water main, um, and all the cost to build a fourteen hundred square, um, linear feet road.
So, so given all that, is, is it a viable development cost wise? I mean, can, can the developer sell ten houses, uh, at the cost that he's gonna have to invest in, in all? And I, I guess my, my point is that two point four million might be their price. That might not be what's reasonable. They, they may never be able to build on that because of the restrictions and we, we could get it for less, I don't know.
Well, we, I know.
Just wondering if we, if we really pressed him, if we really played hardball with the developer.
I had to press for two point four, he was hoping for three million. Um, we did our, our, you know, it took, it took a little bit to get him to even agree to this, but, um, I, I guess, I, I, I see what you're saying. I mean, I would love to have gotten it cheaper.
I think if he could have built it, he would, it would be being built right now.
Be built, yeah, right.
And it's not.
The problem is if we don't, I don't feel like we wanna roll the dice on this, um.
So if I could ask?
Oh, sure.
Kimon to, to comment, maybe I'm way off base, I don't know.
No, they're good questions, I.
Um, both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals require the water line. Property is very difficult to build, but this developer is a large regional developer and I'm sure they would get their money because this is Marshville Hills. So you're looking at probably two million dollar homes, uh, for those ten lots.
And you think that?
He would get it. This person would not be persuaded otherwise.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Darcy.
Uh, when we get to town meeting, if you don't have it now, could you just bring to town meeting an updated latest GLAM Calc and how much closer this brings us to that one point five threshold? Um, and just for folks who don't know, that's your general land area mass calculation. And if we get to that threshold, that provides much more protection than hitting your ten percent affordable housing threshold. Cause that number can fluctuate over time and then you're subject to a predatory forty B development from the state. Whereas the land, the amount of land that you have, that's a known fixed quantifiable number. So if you get to your GLAM Calc threshold of one point five, I believe, that provides much more protection for the town. So every time we acquire an open space property like this, I always like to update folks how much closer we are. So I know that's our ultimate end goal in sight and we're not quite there yet, but this is a good example of how that brings us much closer to that higher threshold of protection. And then it's a good example too of how the reserves that CPC has built up can dwindle very quickly when you purchase and acquire larger acreages of open space.
Okay, I think, um, Greg, I don't know if Greg would have the answer.
Greg has that GLAM, he's got it memorized, I'm sure.
So at the moment, we're about four hundred acres to where we need to be. We have about three hundred acres of tax land that is being investigated, which is wetlands on the town border with Duxbury. on the town border with Duxbury. There's a large chunk of salt marsh there. There's also another large chunk of salt marsh on the South River. If we were to get all those unpaid tax properties, which we're working on, that's three hundred of the four hundred. This is eighteen out of the remaining hundred.
Mr. Lawrence?
Steve Lawrence. I'm just wondering about your numbers, though, Greg. Like, if he's going to do ten lots and two million dollars a house, even if he's only making twenty-five percent, that's five hundred thousand dollars a house, that's five million. Why would he sell it for two point four million if he can make five million? Why would he do that? Why would a developer want to do that? Cut his profits in half?
Because, as mentioned, it's going to require a lot of fill. Basically, they're taking the ground at its, at now, and putting your drainage pipes and everything on that, and then filling between four and six feet. You need to build a roadway across the wetland crossing stream that's ten foot high by four hundred feet long.
Does that answer your question?
First off, my questions are directed to the chairman of the board of selectmen, not to you.
Well, okay.
Steve, it doesn't have to be that way.
Okay.
Well, he's rude to me, so that's what, I don't think he's being rude to you. Nothing is that. He is running the meeting at the moment, so.
Okay. Let's move on. Article Ten?
Excuse me. That was up, that was up here earlier on a question on the preceding article. Joe Pasevich, thanks. It's a question to the open space. The, uh, South River walkway, are there, didn't we secure easements for, to be able to make it possible to walk from 3A to Willow?
Not yet. We, we haven't done, I, there's been discussions with landowners in the past, but we haven't secured any yet.
All right. So, like where the Veterans Memorial is near the Shell Station, or the former Shell Station, I guess?
The Memorial Park with the dam is not, you're not talking about South River Park, right? There's an honor roll there in South River Park.
Yeah, the honor roll.
You're, you're talking about the South River Park with the honor roll, correct?
Right.
Yes, yes. We haven't secured any easements yet, but we would like to get the next step to be the one behind the gas station, so that we could get up to 3A. That would be the goal.
The what behind the gas station?
Is it, the, we would like to get an easement behind the gas.
Okay, but that's not a separate parcel. You'd have to get an easement from the gas station.
No, yeah, it's, no, it, it is a separate parcel.
Oh, it is?
A gas station's a separate parcel, right, when-
The gas station is a separate parcel all the way to the river?
Yes.
That fronts on the river, okay.
That's right. They have frontage on the river.
So, this acquisition under Article Eight, how would you link that to anything? Or what would be the public, how would the public access that?
You're talking about this one, twenty-one sixty Ocean Street? Yeah, well, the public will access it from the South River Park. That's the entrance to it. In addition to that, um, where the, where the driveway is.
Yeah, I didn't see that, sorry.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, um-
Where the driveway is now-
They're posted online.
All right, thank you. Where the driveway is now, that's going to be taken away?
The driveway, um-
Because you said it's dangerous.
But there's going to be a, um, a pedestrian walkway right there as well. Parallel to the driveway, you'll be able to walk.
For access from the street?
Access from the street.
But you can't access from the memorial wall area?
Well, you'll access it there and go right over, but you can. I mean, they're connected. The park is connected.
They're connected.
That's where, um, you can see, I don't know if you can see, to the right of the circle there, that's the existing South River Park. And the walkways that you see going off to the right, they just die off. That's the existing park that goes right up to, to the honor roll. And those are all going to be upgraded and repaired as well, because they're-
One other thing, did you get an estimate on the soil capping that's required?
Yes, well, this will be going out to bid. That, that is their, their best-
So, you have an estimate, but you don't have a, an actual proposal coming?
We don't have, yeah, this, this is, these are projected, these are-
How did you get the estimate for the soil?
Well, we had consultants that would-
A consultant did that, because to follow up on a point, maybe I remember the advisory board, sounds like they may have overpaid for that property, given the problems that are there, but water under the bridge. Thank you.
All right. Article Ten? Article Ten is, um, it's a CBC article, correct?
Yeah, to make improvements to the Daniel Webster Law Office and Museum.
I guess my question is, uh, where's this funding coming from? I mean, it doesn't really outline a funding source at all, correct?
It would be, it's CPC historical. It would come from the historical budget, bucket, I believe, um.
It's reserved.
Reserve?
Historic reserves.
But there's no amount, there's no amount designated at all in this article. I mean-
We didn't have one at the time.
So, it will be.
So, it'll be in the motion.
Okay, all right. Okay, great. Any questions?
So, between Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten, Meg, can we get at some point, uh, an actual accounting of what, what we have, and if these articles pass, what would be left in the, in the CPC? Do you have that?
This is prior to town meeting. This is going into town meeting. So, for open space, uh, there's two hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, which is actually being fully used up in Article Eight. Um, and then for historic, there's five hundred and three thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. Housing has, we'll say, one point four, it's one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand. Undesignated has about six point five million.
What are we drawing out of undesignated? Which, which one of these articles will pull out of undesigned?
Um, Eight is undesignated partially, uh, Nine is undesignated. So, I think projected after town meeting, and in undesignated, there'd be about three point four million left.
After we're all said and done, if all of these get approved, about three point four.
And undesignated, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Questions? Thanks. Any other questions from advisory board, select board?
Okay. Move on to Article Eleven?
Article Eleven is for the acquisition of land, um, on Old Colony Lane. Uh, ninety-one Old Colony, which is adjacent to the airport, uh, would acquire the premises, um, with a former residence on it. Uh, the acquisition will allow the town to acquire the land proposed for redevelopment and, and, uh, control it, so that adverse development couldn't occur on it. Bob could explain it better than I can, but, um, basically it-
We can let him.
So, yes, this parcel is a one acre parcel. It's located immediately next to the Terminal Building at Marshall Airport. So, if you're coming in the Old Colony Lane, it's the last lot before the airport. The, just, I'll try to keep it very brief, but the, a portion of the airport roadway or driveway, small portion of it, eight hundred square feet, and then in the back, about two thousand square feet, were actually occupied by the airport. Um, and earlier in this year, the airport made an easement taking of those two areas, so that it could secure the continued use of those areas, which it's had use of for sixty-plus years. At one point, there was proposed to be a land swap for those two parcels in exchange for some abutting town-owned land. Um, the title could never be cleared, so the land swap could never take place. The property owners then sold the property to a, a development company called Equitable. Equitable, um, did, did discuss selling the property to the town, but we could never come to an agreement. The airport commission needing to maintain its access and improvements where they were, made easement takings. There was a lawsuit filed originally in state court. We removed it to federal district court. Um, they were denied an injunction where they were contesting the validity of the taking. The lawsuit was ongoing, uh, when a discussion was initiated, um, by them and with us about whether we would be interested in purchasing the property again. Uh, this occurred, um, independently of a filing that the applicant made with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The property is actually zoned in the airport district, which allows by right the proposed use of this property as a heliport. It requires a site plan approval. That process began in the early spring, and has been delayed as a result of the agreement that was made here. The selectmen authorized me to make this purchase offer to them. They accepted, um, at seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It would result in the resolution of the lawsuits, uh, because they claim that the easement takings also affect their ability to locate a heliport there, uh, and the amount of money which we, uh, offered to pay them, which was twenty-two thousand dollars for the two easements, wasn't sufficient for the, their compensation. So, um, if we acquire the property, the property is potentially being acquired for affordable housing and/or general municipal purposes, not airport purposes. Um, there is an existing historic residence on it, which previously underwent the demolition delay bylaw waiting period of one year, so the structure could technically be ta, taken down. Um, there is affordable housing on the next lot, um, adjacent to this. Um, and, um, if the select board and town so decide, this parcel could be made available for affordable housing, which may make sense, but it'll be up to the town, or it may make sense to keep it as open space. So, we left the options for acquisition, either for affordable housing and/or general municipal purposes, and the select board, at some point, will decide in the future how we use this land, if we use it at all. Maybe just take down the structure and, and leave it as it is. Um, we may think this is a good spot for some affordable units, given the proximity of other affordable units. Um, we do have money available in the affordable housing reserves, uh, under the Community Preservation Committee. Um, the town has also partnered up recently with Habitat for Humanity elsewhere. So, there's a myriad of options that we can do that minimize our expense, but control the land. And, uh, that was the rationale.
Questions?
Yes, thank you. Um, Bob, for educational purposes, could you just explain what the state laws are with respect to assessed value, appraised value, or held to, and then where we ultimately fell on the purchase rate being proposed?
Sure. The assessed value of this property is approximately seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. State law allows the town to pay for a purchase price, the average of the three, last three years of assessments. And seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is significantly less than the seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars that the last three-year averages. So, um, we have more statutory authority than we've negotiated. So, um, that's where we stand with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from advisory board? Anybody else?
One, so, this is one acre, seven hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
It is actually forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. It's a true acre of land.
It seems a little pricey for you.
Well, there's an existing home on it as well, and there's land value and building value. And, uh, frankly, the land value is less than the building value, but if you drove down there, you might question that. It doesn't look very good. Um, a portion of the structure, the front portion, I think is historic. It's one of the oldest buildings in the town. The rear portion is an addition that's not historical at all.
From a, from a town's perspective, is it, is the reason we'd want to buy this is to eliminate a heliport?
Uh, that's one of the reasons I think it makes sense to consider purchasing it.
Cause the noise.
Well, I think it's debatable, um, or reasonably debatable, as to whether you could locate a heliport there without causing property damage across the street. Um, but at least their initial presentation to the zoning board indicated that it's sufficiently large, has sufficient setbacks for helicopter to come in and take off, and they proposed a helipad, and they proposed, uh, a large garage-style building where the heli, the helicopter, I think it's two, could fit in and out. So, that was the conceptual plan to this ZBA. That's been stalled while this agreement has been entered. In the event that the town meeting doesn't approve it, um, all bets are off. They go back to their permitting, and the lawsuit continues, and, um, we see how it goes. But, interestingly enough, this is zoned for that specific use. So, um, it'll be up to the town, towns to decide.
Okay. Okay. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Pasevich?
Joe Pasevich was right. I'd just like to say that as, I hope this gets acquired. And as soon as it gets acquired, immediately work on a conservation restriction, because we need buffer zone between airport activities and those residential areas. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Article Twelve?
Article Twelve, um, would have the town accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve D, which basically allows, um, local, um, the select board to allow on-premise wine and malt beverage license holders to trade in their license for non-transferable, on-premise, all-alcoholic beverage license. So, if you've got a wine and malt, and you wanted to trade it in for all alcohol, the board would have the authority to make that transaction. The holder of the license would not be able to sell it. But they would be able to avail themselves of all alcohol instead of beer and wine.
Is there a limit to a number of all, so they could do, the select board would have the authority to make all wine and malt licenses full alcohol?
Is it, is it all but?
Yeah, every wine and malt beverage license, uh, could be changed to a, um, all-alcoholic beverage license, but it would expire. It couldn't be transferred. So, it's only valid for existing licensees. And it doesn't count against our quota.
So, we'll still have a quota?
There's still a quota, but this is an exception to the quota law.
Okay.
The state legislature passed this, um, Section twelve D specifically authorizing additional licenses without affecting the quota.
Okay. Mr. Darcy?
It's, it's kind of the state's attempt to solve the moral hazard dilemma of how do you allow more restaurants to open with an annual alcohol license without diluting the value of someone who currently paid for and has a license? And a lot of restaurant owners, as part of their retirement packages, they sell their restaurant and their license, which has a pretty good value, because it's a fixed number. So, what this does is it allows a new restaurant or business to open, but they don't gain anything from it, because they can't sell it for any value or transfer it. So, it's kind of a clever way to try to solve that moral hazard problem.
Except for it, it would benefit a restaurant that, let's say, was not able to, to receive a full alcohol and wanted one, so they weren't able to serve all alcohol, and it affected their income based on that. Like, I can think of a couple of restaurants right now in Marshall, but that's, that have been, that's been alleviated in, in at least one of them. But, so, it's actually good for operators, it just isn't great for their retirement and their future. It's not an investment, per se, right?
Right, so Don Bravo, for example-
That's what I was thinking.
Because the cap was hit, you know, during the wintertime, they were ma, making margaritas with malt, because they didn't have an annual alcohol license. So, because-
Yeah, that's a travesty, PS, so.
Yeah, that should be a crime.
It's a crime. No, go ahead.
But they were fortunate, because Ayayama closed a few doors down, so they purchased their license. So, that solved the problem for them. But this, basically, is kind of the solution where you can allow more restaurants to open, but they can't sell it.
That makes, that makes sense now. Any, any other questions? That was confusing to me, so. Okay, great. Article Thirteen? Greg?
Greg, you're up. Good evening. Greg Gman, Ice House Lane, and I'm the Town Planner. Article thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, um, we would group them together, because they're all MBTA-related articles. Uh, but to start with, the Planning Board opened their public hearing last night on the zoning changes, and we've continued that until October sixth at seven PM. Um, we've had several walk-ins, several emails, and a couple of phone calls with concerns on the MBTA and the coastal and inland wetland map changes of the articles that are coming up tonight. Uh, starting with the main text for the MBTA, um, why are the MBTA articles coming back? We are past or post the Milton case, post the new MBTA Communities Emergency Regulations, post dismissal of the Marshfield and Multitown case. Uh, there is an appeal to that, but it is, doesn't look like it's going to go well. We have a governor who has said on multiple occasions, we have a housing crisis, a Supreme Judicial- Judicial Court that is pro-housing. The Attorney General is expected to take enforcement action against the town shortly. This action could well be to allow a court-appointed special master to decide where to locate this zoning district and what, if any, review standards there will be. So the town has one more opportunity at the town meeting to decide if they would like to have some say in how the town is affected by the MBTA Communities Act.
Okay. I understand that. Oh, I thought you were done.
I only have a few more points on this part, and then...
Go for it.
Under the MBTA Communities Act, the state is calling for Marshfield to create, because I've been told that some people are still unaware, so that's why I'm just giving you a little more background. It has allowed for the creation of a minimum of 1,158 housing units by right. It's a minimum size of 50 acres. It allows multifamily by right. It has a gross density of at least 15 units per acre, does not have age restrictions, and the zone for housing, the housing must be suitable for families. The MBTA Communities District does not bring trains to Marshfield. We are an adjacent community to the Green Bush Line in Situate. And it does not require the town to build the housing. We are only supposed to zone so it could happen. Several important things to keep in mind if Marshfield were to pass the zoning. The town chooses the location. Although it's by right, we could require site plan review, and it would allow us creation of site plan review standards. It would allow us to get 10% of the new units to be Chapter 40B affordable. The community act by itself does not require affordable units. The idea is they're going to flood the market with market-rate units, and that will hopefully drive the price down. That's where this MBTA language is coming from. So when people bring up affordability, this does not address affordability unless we put in the stipulation that 10% of it has to be affordable. The state allows communities to use land that's already developed, and that's an important given. Because when you look at, as you get closer to Boston, most of the land is already developed, so they're thinking redevelopment, especially around train stations. I know, we do not have a train station. We've argued that for a long time. I'll just remind everybody that there is no vacant land where we chose to put this The standards that the town could lose influence over is requiring a site plan review, capping the floors, the number of floors, to four. The state language allows up to six. Capping the density at 16 units per acre, the state law only says you have to have a minimum of 15 acres. Other towns have gone much higher. If you look at the Pembroke, they're in the 30-unit range per acre. I don't think we want 30 units per acre in our town. Also, we have a minimum lot size. The state does not require a minimum lot size. And most importantly, we keep our nitrogen loading requirements in place. Marshfield, this isn't a WRPD. Marshfield has a five-parts-per-million nitrogen loading requirement. The state's language is 10. So that's number 13. Number 14 is just the map change, and number 15 is just the table of use that references attached residential units under MBTA Communities, and then it says, "See Article 16" in the zoning bylaw. So that's 13, 14, and 15. I'll hold there.
Okay. Any questions from the...
Just a couple of comments. I know we've been down this road. What have we spent on litigation on this so far?
I would say roughly $15,000 to $20,000.
That's it?
That's it.
I thought it'd be much more than that. And to you, Eric, you were pretty adamant about taking this as far as it goes. What's your position now?
It hasn't changed. Last month, I think it was the last meeting that we had, maybe two meetings ago, researching the law. It's one thing I overlooked in 3A is it always mentions Charlie Baker's speech in there. And so I did some research and found Charlie Baker's speech that's attached to this in 3A B of the law. And if you look at Charlie Baker's speech, it's not that they were trying to force the community to do it. It was the fact that Charlie Baker wanted to lower the threshold of the two-thirds zoning down to a simple majority, to make it easier for communities to do housing developments. And also, if you look at the Charlie Baker's speech in regards to the grant funding, which the state is trying to use as a punishment towards us, what's in the law, never mind the ones that they put through an economic development bill, I think last year to punish us even more, is that when you read Charlie Baker's speech, he didn't use it as a tool or a punishment, but what it was was an incentive for communities to create more housing. So if you read Charlie Baker's speech that's attached to this law, Charlie Baker wanted to make it easier for communities to put housing in by eliminating the two-thirds required zoning and making it a simple majority, and as well as the grant funding that was attached to the law as an incentive for communities to do, create more housing. So my look at is that, I think, I don't even think that was brought up to the state Supreme Court, in my opinion. I think right there, just using Charlie Baker's speech and what the intended use of the 3A law was, was not to force a community, force it upon a community like Haley and Attorney General Campbell are using it to do right now on us. I think his, Charlie Baker's intention was to allow a community to do it, but with incentives and to make it a little bit easier. But as you saw the last two times in Marshfield, we voted it down overwhelmingly twice. You know, but the state keeps pushing. I just say, keep pushing back. I was like, I don't think they have a leg to stand on, to be honest with you.
What about the results of all those litigation?
Like I said, I think Charlie Baker's speech is a key piece.
Why didn't we litigate Charlie Baker's speech?
Because it's attached to the law, the 3A B law. It clearly states it in there. And like I said, if you read Charlie Baker's speech with this 3A law, it was just to incentivize, make it easier for the zoning.
I understand what you're saying, but I guess if we went through this litigation, and what Eric's saying is true, did that not get brought up?
We litigated the case so far, and there's still an appeal pending at the appeals court now, but we've asked for direct appellate review from the Supreme Judicial Court. We've got two principal issues and one procedural issue. The two principal issues are, we're alleging that this law is invalid because it requires town meeting voters to say yes, and thus disenfranchises voters at town meeting. We have no option to say no. Now, the state could have made this an exception to Chapter 40A, Section 3, and told us we have to do it. But they put it in its own section, and this own section read with the rest of the zoning act requirements, obligates town meeting voters in Marshfield to vote yes in order to effectuate the act. There are very few cases, probably only one, where there's been a similar situation, and it hasn't been since World War II. In World War II, the town of Hudson was ordered to chlorinate its water, and at town meeting it refused to do so. And the state Supreme Court issued an order to Hudson that they have no choice. The difference is, this is zoning after the Home Rule Amendment. Under a zoning act that does give, in a balancing way, towns some local rights to self-determination, but the statute strips town meeting voters of the right to say no. I don't know a single lawyer that thinks this is a great law, not a single one. I don't know a single community that really thinks this was awesome. I'm sure there is some, but it's none that I know of. But everything that Mr. Geman said is exactly true. The law has been amended four times since Governor Baker originally submitted it. The original guidelines were stricken by the Supreme Judicial Court, finding that they were not adopted properly as regulations. The Attorney General, within seven days, adopted emergency regulations, and within three months, adopted new permanent regulations that basically were nearly verbatim what the original guidelines were, but they were passed in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act. And we filed a lawsuit alleging those two issues. Well, the other issue was that it was an unfunded mandate. And as a part of Proposition 2 and 1/2, when it was passed, there was a relief valve given. It says if the town is ordered by a law or regulation to incur some direct expenses as a result of new regulations or new laws, then the town has to be given the funds in order to comply by a funding mechanism in the law enacted in the same session. And there's no dispute of fact that there was no funding mechanism provided for compliance. But the Attorney General's argued successfully to date that this doesn't require the town of Marshfield to build anything, it just requires us to zone, therefore, it's not an unfunded mandate. As far as I know, we're the only town talking about voting rights. There was a procedural issue. The case was decided on a motion to dismiss, so that's why there's not a lot of legal expense so far. That happens right at the beginning of a case. That's what they filed in this case. And I think there was an error made as a procedural matter, but having been to the SJC six or seven times before, when they make a policy decision, they can usually find a way to explain it. I don't think there's anybody that could give anybody any guarantees. I don't want to be accused of threatening anybody. The Attorney General's office is the one that's done the threatening so far, and what they've told us, and they've told every community that's not compliant, and there's still five, that if you don't enact a bylaw like this by January, that they'll bring in enforcement action. And because there's no way of getting around this, I mean, the Attorney General's office knows that we've voted already twice to turn this down, and there's no way of getting around this requirement that there be a town meeting vote. They're going to definitely ask for the appointment of a receiver, so Marshall voters don't have to vote. And our concern, and I think I share it with the Town Planner, is that the receiver will put it somewhere where it could be built, and 1,158 units, somewhere other than where Mr. Geman and the Planning Board have located it, could mean the prospect of new housing. So that's what I think...
The problem I have with this whole thing is, what you just said to me, I didn't get it all. How do we, how do you do that with a couple thousand people at town meeting? All they want to say is, we don't want multi-housing, multi-housing, period.
Right. Well, you know, most, let me try to put it even simpler than that. Most towns don't want this also, and they've determined that the best way to do that is to do exactly what Mr. Geman did, put it in a location where it's probably never going to be built.
That's what we did last time.
Right. Look, there's a lot of people in town that are rightfully indignant that this happened, okay? I'm probably one of those people. I don't like the fact that we were told we have to vote yes on something. If you want to make it exempt, just make it exempt, and don't tell people that they have a right to vote on this, because that's really kind of not consistent. But the reality is, under the current climate that exists, it's always felt more palatable to me that we choose our destiny rather than allow it to be chosen for us.
And if we did that, litigation would still continue, I would imagine.
There may be other, there's only one town that's perfected its appeal other than Marshfield, and that's the town of Middleton. Middleton is arguing the unfunded mandate issue, and they're also arguing something that doesn't apply to us. Middleton doesn't have an MBTA station, and none of the surrounding towns to Middleton have an MBTA station, and they're claiming that this law truly doesn't apply to them. That doesn't, that doesn't work with us. We don't, we don't fit that mold. My guess is if the Attorney General makes a deal with them, it will have no weight on us. The only other town that's filed a notice of appeal was Weston, and Weston has a proposed town meeting article that people suspect is going to pass, and therefore, their appeal will likely not go forward. So that'll leave Marshfield and Middleton right now. I'm told in January, there may be one or two other towns that may not be compliant, but right now, it's Marshfield and Middleton.
It just seems from the last two times, regardless what's the most intelligent approach, the right approach or whatnot, this is going to get voted down again.
And, you know, that's, we live in a democracy, and we vote the way we do, and we could lose a measure of control over this. And if that's the choice that we, as voters, make, then that's the choice that we make.
I just want to say that in the 3A, if you read the 3A law, it says if a community fails to implement this, you know, you lose these funding grants. So, I mean, right there in the wording itself, it says, it pretty much tells you that you have a right to vote on this. So if you read Charlie Baker's speech, the language in 3A, it's pretty much your right to accept it or not, but you have two tyrants in the State House there trying to cram this down our throat and using the...
I agree with everything you say. I'm just trying to come up with what's the most intelligent.
Well, my look at is this, it comes down to the citizens of town, especially what Bob is saying, that they'll send a special master, and maybe they will, maybe they won't, maybe it's fear tactics. But the whole thing is that, do you bend a knee to the state because they're wrong? And, you know, something my look at is that, will they pick another location? I don't know, I can't predict that. But even if we pick what Greg and the Planning Board has, to think that that won't get developed into something massive that we probably don't want, I think it will. It's ripe for it. You know, you have a car dealership there that's got a massive parcel of land. Sell that for a good chunk of change, move on, and then all of a sudden, you got massive, a massive housing structure there, and you just keep moving on down, heading right down towards the high school. And you know something? If, I think, you know, it's my opinion, and everybody's going to have to make a decision on it, but the whole thing is that if you capitulate to the state and bend a knee to them on this, they'll just do it again. They'll say, all right, we did it, and then they'll find another spot and everything. So I was like, my look at is that, if the state says it's a law, then, you know something? Let them implement it. And if, like I said, Bob says we're going to send a special, let them pick the state, pick the location. It's our legislators, representatives in this area that did this to us, you know, in regards to voting for this and not pushing back on it. So, you know, maybe next year, they're the ones that'll pay the consequences for the decisions on this. So that's the way I look at it. But my look at is that, I'm not going to bend a knee to it. And, you know something? If the state wants to come down and do something, then, you know something? Let's go. I'm ready for it. So you can speak over there.
Yeah, I was just making sure. You guys, good. Ms. Jordan?
Thanks. Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street. I just want to say I understand the frustration that is being expressed, that this law doesn't reflect Charlie Baker's intentions, but he's gone. He's been gone. It's been changed. It's been legislated. It's been pursued. It's been threatened. Our retired town engineer was told by people he didn't name that, in addition to the grants that we're going to definitely lose, we just won't be considered. And there's no proof, there's no way to prove that. If we just don't get considered for grants, there's no way to prove that we're not being considered for grants. So his concern was expect to not get any, even if they're not named in the list of grants. So there's a lot more kind of under the surface with that than is actually shown as like a punishment for this. But I get it. Like, it wasn't the intention. It's not in the speech. It shouldn't be the, have been, the intention shouldn't have been changed, but it was, and the legislators voted on it, and there's nothing that we can do about what they voted on. Maybe they will lose their seats at the next election, maybe they won't, but in... won't. But in the meantime, we're, we have this. You know, we can't just ignore that we could lose Chapter 90 funds and a lot, a lot. We could lose a lot. We could lose a lot, a lot, a lot of money. So just wanted to say that. Thanks.
I mean, I want to say to that is that, is that the, you know, next year's going to be a big election year. And I think a couple opponents, that Haley mentioned that they're willing to unravel this whole thing. So the whole thing is that, I believe Haley knows that. To think that the state's going to come down and cram this down our throat next year with a big election coming up would be a big, a big gamble on their part, in my opinion. Like I said, I, I believe that the way the law is written in 3A, it's on our side, no, no matter how you look at it.
Joe Passavich, Wilson Road. First, I want to invite everybody to join me to sign the Citizens Initiative petition to repeal this section of the law that is being worked on right now across the state. And so hopefully we'll have an appeal of this and won't have to worry about it anymore. Next thing, I know the planning board, Mr. Geman, have done a lot of work to outline this particular proposed district with the, apparently we're saying with the idea that it could never be developed anyway. And if, but if we don't adopt it, the state's going to come in, and they're going to tell us where to put this district with the 1,158 units, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just wondering, it doesn't have to be explained to me tonight because this could go on forever. But in the work that was done by the planner, did they determine other areas in town where such a district could be placed? Were there other alternate locations where this could be placed?
Mr. Geman. We looked at three different possible areas following the state's prescriptive, here's what you have to do to locate. And we didn't like any of them because there was an opportunity for a large amount of units to be built. In particular, there is one that we have several large undeveloped parcels left that are commercially or industrially zoned, which will affect a neighborhood which has already had two 40Bs in it. If we're going to get nailed, it's going to be on the south side, and we're going to have a lot of units very quickly, which is why the planning board and I are back here.
I just want to follow up by saying, why would we have a lot of units quickly? Because we're being told if we zone this the way it is, there's no guarantee it's not going to get built. But now those other units would have a lot of units quickly?
Because it's vacant land.
Pardon?
It is vacant land versus occupied building lands.
Does the vacant-
If you look at where we've identified, there's buildings all over there. There are condos. There are apartments. The apartments and condos are roughly 13 to 14 units per acre existing. We're capping at 16. Does it make sense to knock down perfectly good buildings at the moment to put in two more units? I don't think so. We also have a bunch of commercially viable parcels. You would have to buy those parcels, knock down those uses, and rebuild. Yes, it's possible. Is it likely in the short term? No. And condos, you would have to buy each individual condo in order to get them. So Fox runs apartments. The rest of them are all condo-ized. That's what's in that northern side of 139.
But there are also lot, lots of open spaces and parking lots in this proposed district that's included in the, in the warrant. It's not all condos.
No, it is not all condos. And yes, Quirk would be a potential parcel that could be converted in the future. But if you go to purely vacant land elsewhere, this is by right, you'll have it very quickly.
How do we know that?
Because we have certain property owners that are very interested in how we vote this. And if it goes down, I'm sure they'll be in very quickly with proposals.
Well, you're sure, but we, we really don't know that. And I haven't seen where these other alternate locations are, because according to the specifications provided by the state, the other alternate locations for this district had other obstacles and challenges. But we don't know what those are. Like I said-
Yes, on two of them. The third one has the same restriction, but for another town as we do. It's in their zone too. Which is what I've been talking about, which is the south side of 139.
And aren't there conservation restrictions too on those other alternate parcels?
No, they are not.
More strict than this-
They are not conservation restrictions on those vacant parcels.
Or impacts, rather, I should say, impacts. This is, this is already developed. This is not a sensitive area ecologically at all, whereas the alternate locations that you claim to have looked at, which I've never seen, we haven't seen, probably do present more challenges. And from our early discussions more than a year ago, I thought those alternate locations that you had identified had a lot of problems. For example, there wasn't contiguous number of acres available on those other locations, for example. And there would have been other issues that would have been precluded, the kind of development you're talking about under MBTA. So I don't know what to compare. And the, and the bottom line is, again, I don't want, I better stop because we're going to go back and forth without me having information that I think I need. But what I'm trying to say is, so if the state came in and said, okay, we're going to establish an MBTA district, all right, they could pick the one that you just recommended right here. Or could they pick one of those other ones? I don't know because I don't have the other information. So they could come in and just say, yeah, the, you think they're going to spend, and you spent a lot of, the planning people spent a lot of time and money to come up with this. Is the state going to come in and just willy-nilly just pick out an area somewhere else in town, up in Marshfield Hills or some other place, and say that's where your MBTA district's going to go? Well, for 1,158 units, there's going to be a need to put in more water mains. There's going to be a need to build sewer service. There's going to be a need to do all those other improvements, including roadways, driveways, et cetera, et cetera. That's, could be an enormous cost. So how can we say that someone else is going to come in, or the state's going to say, this is going to be a new MBTA district. It's not exactly where you proposed it before on Plain Street, and you, and you're expecting that there'd be a development right away, immediately? There's no way to say that, because you don't know who would be willing to do that, even though there may be some willing sellers. There's no way to say how much it would cost to develop those other areas. There's just no way to say that and use that as a threat. I would say just vote this down again, as Mr. Kelly and others have been saying. Fight all the way, no matter what it takes.
And live with the consequences.
And if you think the state, the consequences to who? To Mara Healy.
To the whole town.
To Mara Healy.
No, to the whole town.
If she comes in, or the state comes in and tries to ram 1,158 units on Ocean Street or up in North Marshfield, boy, oh, boy, this town will turn so red, and so many people will be outraged. There'll be consequences, all right, to Mara Healy and anybody else that pushes things like this. So, so they, believe me, they're looking at consequences if they came in and put us under a receivership. Do you think that would, people would just sit back for that and just take it? I don't think so. I think it's better to spend the money to continue to litigate this, and again, join me in signing that petition to repeal 3A, and stop with these baseless threats. The state's not going to come in and just all of a sudden take over Wrexham and build 1,158 units. Have you calculated the cost of building 1,158 units in Wrexham or in any other area of town where you say there are vacant lots?
No, because we're not talking about Wrexham, Joe.
Well, where are you talking about? Don't say it. Talk to me about it in private. But you haven't calculated what it would cost to put 1,158 units.
Where are the other locations that they're building?
Okay? You haven't calculated that. You don't know what obstacles a developer would face. And you don't know the consequences that politically they would suffer by trying to ram 1,158 units into a beautiful residential neighborhood somewhere in, in Marshfield.
Chairman, point of order.
Thank you.
I think, I think we, we understand Mr. Passavich's point.
Right. Okay. Hold on a second, Mr. General. So, Mr. Galvin, if you can illuminate us, most of us are not lawyers here, certainly not me, but in terms of supremacy-
Yep.
-the rights of the voters of a town, do they fall under the rights of the state, or is it an equal battle? Because that's really what your appeal is based on, right? The, the ability of the town's voters for self-determination versus the authority of the state to just say, we want you to vote, but you can only vote yes. So that's what seems like-
I, I taught a course in federalism, okay? And this is an extension of that, okay? Federal government has its constitutional laws, the supremacy clause, and what it doesn't regulate, the states may regulate. The states charter towns, and before the Home Rule Amendment, towns couldn't do anything without state approval. The Home Rule Amendment gave cities and towns the right to do certain things. One of the limitations on that was to have a law that's inconsistent with the state constitution or state law. They're arguing that in this case. You cannot have a local law that's inconsistent with state law. That's the problem, okay? And that's what the Home Rule Amendment has an exception. Marshall can do anything it wants in these areas, but you can't do anything in these areas if we have a law that says you have to do something differently. That's what the Attorney General's arguing. That's the principle that applies in this particular case. I wish they had done this law differently, because I think they could have made that case better if they did that. But that's the rule of law that we're running afoul of, according to the Attorney General's office. And it has legs.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That was helpful.
Mr. Lynch.
Steve Lynch, 50 Central Street. So, I have some other things I want to say, a whole bunch of things, but to what Bob just said. So the state has to make laws that are constitutional, though, right? On the federal level.
I, I have argued that this law is unconstitutional as it relates to us.
But you argued it on the state level.
Under the state constitution, which is more expansive than the federal constitution.
I get that, but, you know, the, you know, judges have opinions, right? And it's, it's, it flows back and forth on one side or the other of, of the line of what's constitutional and what isn't. Maybe in federal court, we'd have better luck, right?
Just so you know, Steve, the state Supreme Judicial Court has already ruled that this law is constitutional, and they've also ruled that the Attorney General's office, in addition to preventing us from collecting 17 grants that are annulated in the statute, has the right to bring an enforcement action against the town.
I, I get all that, but we haven't gone to the, the U.S. Appeals Court, or the U.S. Supreme Court, or any, we haven't exercised any of that. We have plenty of courts to go to still, right? And so I, I get, I get it, Greg. You, you want to put it in the best place for the town of Marshfield, right? But it's not, it's not fair for you not to give us the option to look at the other places that you say that would really hurt the town worse. I mean, you know, we're, we're doing this. We're the taxpayers. We're, we're the voters. We have a right to know. You say there's two other places, then you should, you should show us those places.
I said, we looked at two places, and there's the third place, which is where I think it will happen. If you drive down Enterprise Drive, you will find several large, flat, already cleared parcels, which people want to put multifamily housing in.
I get, I get it. You're trying to put it in the best place. I understand that. But, you know, this is a big decision for everyone, so we should be able to reason about those other two places too. So we should be able to look at this. To do this here tonight and to do it at town meeting again is not, this, this is a gigantic decision for the town of Marshfield. We've already, we've already done it twice, and for the planning board, three, what is it, three elected people to, to go against the will of the town twice now at town meeting, and to bring this back under some obscure state law that says the planning board can bring it back after it's been defeated is not right. That's not democracy. So there's more state, at state here. It's, this is the concept of democracy here. You know, this is them denying our right to vote, telling us how you have to vote one way. That is against every bone in my body of what this country is based on. So I'm willing to take the chance of, to go further in court to, for just that concept, for the ideal of democracy. And I, and we, and clearly at town meeting, people have come out, the big dig, the MBTA, we don't want it. Get it? Three people shouldn't be bringing this back. And it's not, it's not fair to do this to us, especially if you're not going to sit down for, and have weeks of hearings and show us all the information that you say. I'm, I'm not denying that, that those other spots would hurt the town more. I'm not saying that, Greg. I'm just saying that we should have a right to look at it also, you know, because we have to make this decision. And, and I, and I'm, you know, I think that we should go to the U.S. Supreme Court if we have to. There's no reason not to. $15,000, that's all we paid you, Bob, for this? You did, you know-
Filled a lawsuit. I filed oppositions to motion to dismiss, and I filed an opposition to preliminary injunction and some supplemental memos and affidavits.
So are you licensed to go to the U.S. Appeals-
I am not.
So we'd have to get a, a lawyer that-
Just so you know, before we filed our lawsuit, I contacted a constitutional lawyer at Wilmer Hale in Boston, one of the biggest firms in Boston, and asked him if he felt that there was any violation of the federal constitution, United States Constitution, or any Voting Rights Act, and the answer was no.
Well, I don't know how the government can tell you how you have to vote. It doesn't make any sense. It's just, it's, you're right. They should have just made it a law then. I mean, tell us, it's, it's insult to us as Americans. You have to vote this way. It's, it's just ridiculous. And the town has, has already voted twice overwhelmingly, and it's just not fair that the planning board can bring this back.
Could, could I just make one comment?
Yep.
I think people have to, to vote intelligently on this. Consider what happens if we win and what happens if we lose, because there's no guarantees here. So, and I don't know what the consequences are exactly if we lose, but-
What about right and wrong? It's wrong for them to tell us how we have to vote, right?
Which is why we've done what we've done today.
On the state level.
And we've already got a state judge that said they have the right to do that.
Yeah. And you, and you had, and you talked to one constitutional lawyer. There's thousands of them out there.
Well, I'd be happy to receive your call and give me the name of the lawyer that's going to be able to bring that case, because-
Stop. You know, come on. You talked to one lawyer, all right? So what?
No, I talked to a lawyer I trust at a firm that has a constitutional law division.
So is it, so the U.S. Appeals Court, right? So that's appointed by who? By the current administration?
No, those federal judges have tenure for life. They've been appointed by past presidents and confirmed by the Senate.
No, this is against everything that I feel is right when it comes to-
And just so you know, no one disagrees with you. This is a terrible law. No one does. But if you're, if we lose the case, what we're telling you is we can't tell you what happens to Marshfield. And Mr. Geman, I think, is trying to be polite and fair to everybody, but there are other places in town where this is probably easier to build. And what makes you think that the state-
I'm not disagreeing with-
Would not put it there?
I'm sure there are, but show them to us, so that we can make that decision.
All I know is that we have excess water. We have excess sewer capacity. And if I was a developer and thought like a developer, that's exactly where I'd start, because it'd be the cheapest and easiest to build it.
Well, sometimes you have to just do what's right. And clearly, the, the people in Marshfield at town meeting now have decided that.
I agree.
Ms. Keith.
Sam Keith, Smoke Hill Ridge. I just want to say that I didn't participate, and I've never been able to ask directly about the 40Bs. I made one, two comments when I did write into the planning board. One was about the voting. One was about, you know, I would love to see the 40Bs included, because we're looking at a mandate of 1,100 units, and we've got about half of that with the two 40Bs. And now he's mentioning, you know, easier building. I just want to say, I'm not against dense housing and multifamily housing. It's going on all over the place. Let me follow these units. Now we've done two new ones. Our school system, the capacity is down, so we obviously have the room to eventually bring it a little bit up. It's, the thing that offends me is that this zone is completely over an entire length of the business zone. 84 acres. It's huge. Eighty-four acres, it's huge. It goes the entire length of the street, covers our business zone. Quark is definitely ripe for selling out at 12 acres, because they could fit a couple... That's exactly what those 40Bs are on, 12 acres each. They can fit a couple hundred units there. So, we've done 550. We have a sellout Quark. We're doing another couple hundred or whatever. We're three-quarters of the way to meeting the mandate, and now we're saying there is... I've never talked directly to the planning board about these options. I'm not opposed to easier building. Build it in Enterprise Drive. Build two more of these 40Bs. Put the zone over the two that exist, which I'm not sure that can be done, but if it can, put it over that, leave room for a couple more, and we're done. And we have all our housing, and we've met the state's quota, and I'm just saying, if someone wants to come in and force us to do that, good. I'm fine with that. I have no problem with apartments and stuff. I don't like them. I'd like to see us have room for family, you know, small family houses at ranches and so that my kids can afford, but that... We don't have that type of land around here anymore, it seems, so, you know. So, I just want to make it known, too, that, you know, a lot of this is, oh, everybody's against the housing. I'm against this actual zone and where it is, and where's our business zone going? You know, would we not have some... It's like, I do envision it eventually being built and having these big, tall buildings, taller buildings than what we normally see around here, kind of against the road and everything. I think they're more suitable. It's not about hiding certain people in the back, which was kind of said before. It's about, when you take pictures, taller people go in the back. When you plant plants, taller plants go in the back. Taller, bigger buildings belong. It's nicer to have them in a more isolated place away from the street, so they're not hovering over you, and they also... Those people can enjoy some peace and quiet back there. They're not up against the road. What's the point of putting apartments right up against the 139, practically a highway? So, I just wanted to say my piece with that, and I'm not afraid of having somebody come into this town, because I want to meet them, shake their hand, and bring them to our 40Bs and say, "We've done 550 units already." So, give us credit for that. Thank you.
Okay. Article 16. Great.
Articles 16, 17, and 18 are all related to the inland, wetland, and coastal wetland map change and text. So, a little background, former Soil Conservation Service is now called the Natural Resource Conservation Service. It is a federal agency under the U.S. Department of Agriculture. For years, the Soil Conservation Service has provided communities with both coastal and inland wetland mapping based on soils information. This is different than the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, which is based on soils and vegetation. From time to time, these maps have been updated. The most recent update was in 2020. We updated the inland-wetland layer of the zoning map back in April of 2024. At the time, we had been told that the wetland layer had not changed. However, after further research, it shows that it had made changes to the coastal wetlands area as well. These zoning articles were to bring these or are to bring these inland and coastal wetlands maps and text up to current standards. So, Article 16 is basically we're swapping out the language under B definitions, inland wetlands, from Soil Conservation Services to Natural Resource Conservation Services. Article 17 would be amending the language for the coastal wetlands that specifically says issued in July of 1969, and replace it with as determined by the Natural Resource Conservation Service, because in the future, we'll expect more, you know, up-to-date or better maps in the future, or updated because there have been man-made changes to those parcels. Article 18 is the... Up the map itself, showing where the coastal inland-wetland area is. The biggest change in area is the Green Harbor-Polder area. For years now, has been shown as an inland-wetland when it was supposed to be a coastal wetland. So, that big area... There's a big area in that, in the middle, that is going to be shown as green instead of red. There were two smaller areas. One up by the curve, where I knew it as the BP station. I don't know what they call it now, but you got on the curve going down. Off of Plymouth Ave, we had a couple of properties that had been, years ago, altered, filled, and paved. This map reflects that change. And then down in the area of the town pier, the DSA, the sewer treatment plant, and the town pier, again, there are areas that are being changed because they have been altered, and these parcels are all municipal-owned, and the uses that altered it were uses that are allowed under our zoning bylaw for the coastal wetlands and the inland wetlands to be altered. So, that's those three changes on Articles 16, 17, and 18. And I know we had comments on concerns with the DSA, the sewer treatment plant, et cetera. So, as I mentioned before, the planning board is continued to October 6th, so there's no decision yet on any of these articles by the planning board.
Okay. So, following that meeting, we will have, most likely...
There would be... Yeah. We would submit the recommendation to town meeting.
Okay. All right. Does she make sense? Advisory Board, anybody? Question? Select Board?
Yes.
Mr. Darcy.
So, first, I would say that the purpose of tonight's joint advisory board meeting is for residents to ask questions about the town meeting articles, and then debate is for a town meeting. And we've kind of lost a lot of time tonight, getting mired down in debate, and we still have a lot of articles to get through. So, just want to emphasize again, tonight's to ask questions, and debate is for a town meeting. So, for this article, Mr. Geman, just the two questions I have are, number one, it seems like Article 18, what it does is just updates us to modern, current maps, because currently we're stuck in 1969 maps. Is that right?
Correct.
Is there anyone who lives in a flood zone who would be affected by these changes, either positively or negatively? Are they in a flood zone today, and they wouldn't be with the update?
These maps have nothing to do with the flood plain.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I've got a question. Do you have maps to show in regards to how this is changing?
They're downstairs at the town clerk's office. They're on the wall up here. They're online, and they're at the library.
At the moment? Not sort of put up on the screen at the moment?
No. I do not have any presentation with me. I was not expected, I thought, to have a PowerPoint.
All right.
But the map is down the hall, if you would like to look at it on the way out tonight.
Ms. Keith?
Pam Keith, Smoke Hill Ridge. This isn't a question, but I do want to... I do think part of the reason for this meeting is for everybody here to get information. So, I would hope... I would like the advisory board and the select board to look at the comments that have been sent in to the planning board, and that way, I won't be restating my comments tonight. But the removal of the dredge spoils area out of the coastal wetland zone is a very serious issue, I think. The town has wanted to bulldoze that land, which, by the way, the selectmen is in charge of. So, you know... So, I put in some comments. I don't know who else did, but you may find some information there. I commented on that there are some wetlands designations and stuff like that. I do have a question, because I am totally confused. We... The map, I do remember, we voted in April 2024, inlands/wetlands, only on the consent agenda. I don't have a copy of that map, and I did not attend that particular vote. At the time, I thought it was red over the property that is what I call the Venus property, the Drosopolis Brothers property down at the Esplanade. But I've heard comments that this map now that also includes a change or shows something on that property. I can't tell, is that new or is it a change now? I've heard it's a change, but it says it's inlands/wetlands, and we already voted inlands/wetlands.
Inland/wetlands was voted on at the April 2024 town meeting. The change is because I started taking our current zoning map and the new inland and coastal wetlands map and trying to figure out where there were changes on the properties. The Venus property shows up because it's now red, and the surrounding area is green. And I had not noticed that until I started going parcel by parcel by parcel on the map. So, that change had already happened. It's just on the current zoning map, you wouldn't see it, because that district is kind of a pinkish-red. And the red didn't show up, because you have multiple layers on a printed map. It's hard to see.
So, you're saying, so, existing-wise, the green and the red now on those properties, there was no red at one point. There was only coastal wetlands that bumped up to the back of the properties there. It's now coated in red and green, and you can't build structures on those inlands or coastal wetlands. So, I'm trying to see, is that already in place from 2024, which is what you sound like you're saying? Or are we doing something to that?
Andrew's going to answer.
Andrew Stewart, Building Commissioner. So, since that town meeting, when we changed the inland-wetlands district from the historical map that we had, the zoning map layer, to the actual updated soil survey, since that was voted in at town meeting, all of my zoning determinations have been updated based on that updated layer, which, yes, now shows that little bit of red going into that Venus property, but it was... I've been going by that for like the last year or whatever, since we've been going by the new map. That inland-wetlands district... Inland-wetlands does not preclude a property from being built on or even having a structure placed within the inland-wetland district. It just needs a special permit with the zoning board of appeals and has to meet some other conditions on it. Coastal-wetlands district completely prohibits structures other than piers, walks, parks, and marine facilities and stuff like that. Also, no filling of land, you know, remove that kind of stuff. Dredging, obviously, we do with a special permit, but actually, this... The inland-wetlands district, so this hasn't changed, the actual... It's just the color and the definition on the actual map that's getting changed, but I've been making my determinations based on the conservation or the soil map from the Natural Resource Conservation Service since town meeting voted it in, so that's been consistent. We're literally just cleaning up the name, because they also... The other problem was, they changed the name of the department from the Soil Conservation Service to that. So, that's the other part of the article, too, right? I believe, Greg.
Natural Resources, yes.
To clear up the name of the language, to make it consistent across both of the articles and reference the same map system.
Okay. Got a question?
Oh, hi. Go ahead.
I just want to... If I'm understanding, sorry, I'm going to get into this as well. This is purely clerical and not changing anything previously. Would you see?
Coastal map is being changed, because years ago, we had hired a different firm to do the mapping, and they missed one portion of the coastal wetlands, and they had inland wetlands on top of it, which is behind the dyke on 139, which goes all the way almost up to the airport. It's a very large area, but it wasn't designated properly, and we didn't catch it until recently.
Ms. Posavich.
Yeah. It's, from what I understand, Articles 16 and 17 are just basically clerical-type alterations. It's 18, the change in the map. And I keep here in reference to a soil survey that has caused the maps to change, and it's best to my knowledge, there's been no soil survey. There's been some remote sensing being done by what was then the... Which was the SCS, Soil Conservation Service. Now, it's Natural Resource. It's still under the USDA, whatever. So, it's all been remote sensing. It's not like there've been teams of people walking through town with shovels and augers, you know, punching holes. And what we just heard from the town plan was that, when he got some information from the USDA's division that does this kind of stuff, he went to the individual lots and started looking at things. So, when I look at the new map, which is this thing on the back of your warrant, is impossible. This is just... It's pretty, but there's nothing you can discern from this. The scale is so crazy. You'd need a magnifying glass, and even then... Thankfully, the planning board, a couple of days ago, put the new map as a separate file online, so you can zoom in and zoom out. And when you go through it, there's really like just a couple of places where there's been some changes. And interestingly, those changes on what I would consider sort of lots or locations that have been the subject of a lot of controversy lately, and those, to me, it seems to me like those are the only places where there's been some changes made. The outlines of the wetlands districts, coastal or inland, have basically stayed the same, except for those two lots. One is the Venus property, and the other one is the Plymouth Ave-Ocean Street Junior property. And in the case of the Junior property, and as has been... And the removal of the dredge spoil area also from the coastal wetlands district, it's... I'm hearing that because those locations have been altered, therefore, they're not in... Those areas, the Junior property and the dredge spoil area, are no longer in any wetlands district because of alterations. And the point I want to make is, because alterations do not necessitate removing a property from a wetlands district. Yes, soil characteristics I used, and they're described, they're in the definitions inside our zoning regulations, like how a wetlands district is established, and they say that soils that exhibit certain properties are in the wetlands district. But it doesn't say that we can't put other areas into those wetlands districts as we determine to be proper for conservation, for aesthetics, for safety reasons, in anticipation of sea level rise, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, to take... And because somebody paved the land at the corner of Plymouth and Ocean Ave, still does not relieve the owner of that property from obligations under a court order to restore that surface to a natural state, number one, and because the dredge... And the dredge spoiled area being pulled out, which is an area that, as a town, we should be preserving for aesthetic and for safety reasons. And also, the wetlands district, actually, in this case of the dredge spoil area, is a good thing to have to remain as a coastal wetlands district, because it would help to preserve that area. There are other conservation restrictions there, but it would also help to preserve that in the event we had to expand the sewer treatment plant onto that kind of parcel. So, again, the only things I can find on a map that are changing on the Drosopolis property, I don't understand that at all. I don't understand extending the wetlands protection district, inland-wetlands protection onto the Drosopolis property. I just don't understand that at all. That's cuckoo. Removing the dredge spoil area, absolutely against the best interests of the town and the residents. Designating the Plymouth-Ocean Ave lot as out of the wetlands district, when it's been mandated that it has to be restored. And it just... It makes no sense. Those map alterations make no sense. And it makes one wonder, has somebody got some other ideas about maybe taking the dredge spoils area down by the town pier and developing it for a parking lot or for condos or for who knows what?
Joe, I think that's speculation. I think we get it.
You know what I'm saying?
I think that's speculation. I think we get it.
But those have been attempted. It has been attempted to put condos there, and it has been attempted to put a parking lot there.
Okay.
So, that's not speculation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Geman.
I just wanted to mention that the coastal and inland wetlands are zoning under the zoning bylaw and are different than what the Conservation Commission deals with DEP, et cetera, Mass Wetlands Protection Act. So, some of the parcels that Joe brought up, they may be coming...
they may be coming out of the coastal zone or whatever on the zoning. That's not releasing them of their issues with the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act.
I have to respond, but it does remove a barrier to development. So even though under Wetlands Protection Act, state law, you, yeah, you still have to go through CONCOM to get permit to go there. But this zoning protection is something that the community is voting to protect land that is near the coast. It doesn't have to be exactly by definition contain those kinds of soils. But there are areas adjacent to the coast that should be protected under zoning. So we don't see the kinds of development that obscure our seaside areas.
All right, we get it.
And create other problems.
Stewart.
Just want to give a little bit of information on, on this, on a little bit of background. When I became building commissioner and started to start making determinations about the inland wetlands district and the coastal wetlands district, I saw that the boundaries of the map was not based on actual, you know, definite, definitive lines, but it was based on this soil survey. So then I started to do some research and try to even find this soil survey because it's not like we just have it kicking around here. So I had to do some research, actually find it online, download the copies of it. It's old copies of the paper maps from 1969. You can imagine what they look like online. They're very difficult to read. It's not something where I can look at that thing and go, oh, yes, this specific property is in and this one is out. It's a, it's a subjective thing. These maps are designed to guide the town as to whether or not something is even developable, developable at all. Or if it is in this other area, the inland wetlands district, it may be developable, but these are the standards that we want you to go by and these are the things that we want you to do to ensure that it is developable, developable. So those are the protections under the actual zoning law. My issue was becoming, I, it was very difficult to make a determination. I was like, this soil survey is from 1969. Doing some research, I found out that there was an updated soil survey. So then I started a conversation around town with the zoning board, with Greg and the planning department, with some other folks to talk about, should we update the soil survey? It literally came from me because I was having difficulty making zoning determinations and I wanted more clarity and I saw that there was updated information. It was not based on any one property or any two properties or giving anybody relief or anything else like that. It was literally so that we could be more accurate as a town to our current 2025, you know, what's going on with our land, okay? It's very similar to our coastal map of wetlands resources for building officials that show our areas of barrier beaches where we're supposed to send it to the Conservation Commission and they determine whether it's a coastal dune or other thing. It's a guide to help our development process and how we develop properties. One thing I do want to say is that these are the, I want to do tell you the other properties in that area that Joe was talking about that are also coming out of the coastal wetlands district. That is Brant Rock Market, all of the houses on Johnson Terrace, four houses on MacArthur Lane, three houses on Pershing Road, two houses on Second Road, 341 Plymouth, 356 to 360 Plymouth, 417 Plymouth, 436 to 566 Plymouth, 875 to 945 Ocean Street, one house on Adams Road, seven houses on Wilson Road, unfortunately not yours, Joe, eight on Billings Road, eight on Hutchinson Road, five on Arkansas Street, four on MacArthur, two on Hartford, six on Surf Ave, three on Constitution, three on Constellation, and two on Monitor. So it's not a selective, like, let's just pick these properties and get them out. It was, it's benefited a lot of different residents throughout the town. It gives a lot of opportunity for people to develop their properties and, and give them rights to it. It does put some other properties in the coastal wetlands district that were not there before, but very few are affected in that manner. So I just wanted to get that information out. Thank you.
Okay.
I got a question.
Okay.
So am I, with this whole change in the coastal thing, just here and Andrew, this is, would I be safe to say that it's all about opening opportunities for development?
As far as the planning board and the planner, it is about making sure we have the best possible maps available versus helping somebody or hurting somebody.
Yeah, I mean, just listening to Andrew, it sounds like it's a benefit for the developers in regards to these map changes, you know? So I guess what some people say may have some weight, weight to it in regards to why the maps are changing, so.
Good.
Okay.
Steve Lynch, 50th Central Street. So I don't understand how the soil sample could be much difference at the DSA. When I was like 10 years old, I could, the parking lot at the town pier wasn't there. I could swim from there to Hardeats. And so all that material that's there now was dredge spoils. So it's, I don't understand how you could get this, there might be some fill on top of it, you know, a, a small layers, but the majority of that area is ocean. It's, it's sand, it's mud, it's, it came from dredging. How can you get a soil sample that shows that it's not part of the coastal wetlands? And what about all the vegetation that's there? So, I mean, we need to make sure that the DSA is, is not going to be developed. It needs to stay where it is.
Do you want to answer?
Joe's right about the, about if the sewer treatment plant. I, I would say that we, that selectmen should probably deed the property over to the DPW with a conservation restriction on it, so they couldn't do anything with it other than use it for expansion of the sewer treatment plant if they had to. All right, thanks.
All right. Article 19, article 19, right?
Yep, 19. Article 19 is to change the reference in the zoning, all references in the zoning for DHCD or the old Department of Housing and Community Development and replace it with EOHLC or Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. All that does is reflect the fact that the state has changed the name of the department.
Administrator. Yeah, it's just, it's administrative, correct?
Yes.
All right. Any questions? Like advisory board, select board?
No.
Right. Article 20?
Article 20, similar. All references to the housing partnership, which no longer exists. It is now going, the Affordable Housing Trust is what was replaced with. And again, administrative.
Okay. Little disclosure, my wife is on that board, so I will not comment. Any questions from the advisory board? Select board?
I, is the, by deleting the housing partnership, I mean, do we, do we still have the housing partnership still part of our charter or bylaws in regards to language in it?
Yep. Mr. Collins.
So the housing partnership still, I guess, exists by name only, but all of its functions have been assumed by the housing trust.
And, I mean, what about the state law? Do we have it still in state law in regards to the housing partnership?
Well, the housing partnership was formed in order to advocate for affordable housing development. Trying to, trying to, I guess it was at one point a repository for some funds that were left over when we had mitigation funds paid to the town. There was a question about whether that was legal or not. The state passed a new law authorizing the existence of affordable housing trusts and we weren't the first, but we weren't the last. And we finally created an affordable housing trust that had all the authority that the housing partnership did and now the legal authority to hold money, the legal authority to buy and sell property. So in my opinion, the town finally caught up to what the law was and now is functioning the way it should.
Well, I mean, you mentioned that the Marshall Affordable Housing Trust does some of the same things as the housing partnership. So was the, what was the main purpose of, I guess, changing it to the Marshall Affordable Housing Trust?
Well, the state passed a new law authorizing towns to create a bylaw on affordable housing trust. And that's what we've done. That's what most communities have done. And it facilitates the development of affordable housing in the town of Marshfield and allows the town a multitude of ways to deal with and create and preserve affordable housing.
Doesn't, didn't the housing partnership do that as well?
No.
Can you explain?
It, it didn't. It tried, but it had legal, it, it had legal limitations on its authority that the housing trust doesn't have. Didn't have the authority to hold money.
Right. That was the main, that was the main.
That was the.
Didn't really have any authority to acquire property in its name. Those are just two of the principal reasons.
Because it couldn't hold money.
And it couldn't acquire property and it couldn't create, develop, and do anything other than maybe support affordable housing.
But that, that could have been something that just the legislature could have changed. What it could do, right? Instead of.
The legislative could have called it an affordable housing partnership law, but they called it a municipal affordable housing trust law.
All right, I'm good. Okay. Article 20?
A question.
Article 21?
Question.
Mr. Pesavich.
I, I, I think it's more than just a clerical change. The Marshall Housing Trust came into existence and as has been used, the word used was subsumed, the authority of the housing partnership. Yeah, it did subsume it, but it's, it's subsumed it without changing the bylaw. So what this article does is it, it basically takes over everything the housing partnership was doing and in a relationship with the housing authority. And so in, in essence, the Marshall Affordable Housing Trust, by subsuming the authority of a, of a, of a, of a body or an agency without changing the bylaw, in my view, was illegal. Okay? And as far as the Marshall Housing Partnership not doing anything, having tried and not doing anything, I think there's a lot of people that would differ with that opinion, especially when you look at the M-HOP program and how many affordable units were created. Thank you.
All right. Article 21.
Article 21 is to modify the first sentence of 503D that recognizes that the planned mixed-use development, or PMUD, and the Brant Rock Village overlay, or BVA, RVO, are considered mixed-use districts. So previous to those two districts being created, we only had one mixed-use development, one mixed-use development zone in all the, the whole town, and it was the downtown B1. So this reflects the fact that we have two additional multi-use districts in town now.
Okay.
So administrative.
Any questions from advisory board, select board? Right, article 22?
Article 22 modifies the existing retail and service number six by removing aircraft from the use category and combining the motor vehicle sales and repairs. And it would remove this use from the RB district and leave it as a permitted use in the B2 and allow it as a special permit in B3 and by right in the industrial district.
What's the main purpose of this, Greg?
So who would sell an aircraft on the B2's district? If you're going to look at an aircraft, you want to be at the airport so you can take, kick the tires and take the plane up or something.
They'll probably actually take it off.
So we were separating out that use.
Okay.
We've also had difficulties in the past with auto body versus auto repair being in the WRPD, et cetera. So we're trying to, over time, Andrew and I and Board of Appeals and the planning board, et cetera, and applicants, when they come in, our use categories need to be expanded. So we're trying to slowly expand and, and add in different uses that have been coming up.
Okay, that makes sense. Questions, questions? Okay, article?
Question on that. I, I see in the industrial I1, it's going to be a permitted use. That's being added?
Yes.
Because prior to that, it was not permitted in industrial.
Yes.
It's just being added outright.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Article 23?
Article 23 is to modify the current retail and service number 16 to separate out the motor vehicle repairs from gasoline sales, service stations, and the sales of convenience goods. So if you look at most gas stations, they have a little store, coffee shop or something in it, that type of stuff.
Right. And repair stores, you typically don't.
And again, we're taking that out of the RB district. So when we created the RB district many years ago, it used to be B2. And we're talking about westward heading past McDonald's Funeral Home and stuff. That area had a lot of single-family houses or a lot of small houses that had businesses on the first floor and the people were living on the second floor. And basically, we were like, we don't need McDonald's or other type of, you know, more highway-oriented businesses in that area. So we made that RB. So this is basically reinforcing the RB area.
Okay. Questions? Questions? Okay. Article 25?
Article 24 allows boatyards, marinas, et cetera, in the industrial district by special permit. So outside of the Zone 2, or the Water Resource Protection District, in the industrial area, we have a lot of outdoor boat storage going on. And this reflects that, but we want to have it under a permitting process so we can get buffer, you can, you know, do other improvements by the special permit site plan review.
Okay. Questions? All right. Article 25?
Article 25 puts the selling of aircraft, servicing, et cetera, in the airport district where it should be.
Makes common sense.
Question?
Mr. Pesavich.
And, but then, under the existing zoning, number eight, under retail and service, it says establishments selling or renting aircraft and aircraft accessories, repairing aircraft. It's permitted in the air, in the airport district. It already is permitted in the airport district. So how is this, and again, it's listed as XX. If you notice, it's a line item or, or category XX. But in the existing zoning, it's listed as use number, or line number eight. So what's happening? Is this replacing line number eight or is this, or does line number eight stay?
So Andrew's checking line number eight. The XX is because we have a number of zoning changes that have not been showing up in the green book yet because they're in process with first the town clerk submitting it to the attorney general. And then once we get it back from the attorney general, it's got to go to the E code. So we're probably four town meetings, Andrew, behind on the E code book, which is why I put XX because I didn't want to put a number and then have two number 19s or two number 22s or whatever. And there's a little note on the bottom of 25 that says, that's what we're doing. We're basically going to put the next number once we have the updated zoning.
So I think the, the difference in number eight is establishing establishments selling or renting aircraft and aircraft accessories or repairing aircraft. This is establishment selling new and/or used aircrafts, aviation fuel sales and servicing. So, you know, there's repairing and then there's servicing, there's fuel sales. This doesn't have the fuel sales, number eight doesn't have fuel sales in it. So, you know, could an amendment be made to the existing one? Perhaps, but that's why Greg put the XX there, is to put it down where it fits in next.
So then if I may, again, so we haven't, we haven't, they've been selling fuel at the airport and it hasn't been permitted? Is that what's happening? And so we need to create, uh, zoning so that they can continue selling fuel?
Mr. Geman.
I would assume that they are selling fuel there. Um, it's an airport. We didn't have it listed as a use, so we're adding it as a use.
Okay, and also in number eight, by special permit, you can sell or rent aircraft in a B two zone, a business, a B two zone. Is that's gonna stay?
I believe we were moving the B two for the aircraft, but we will have to look at number eight.
Yeah, that's. Thanks for your help.
All right. Article twenty six?
This is to allow towing and impound storage, um, in the industrial district by special permit. Currently, we do not have that use in our use category. We do have Andy's towing, and they are located in the industrial district outside of the, uh, Water Resource Protection District.
So were they on some kind of, uh, I mean, uh, exception of some sort, or is that Andy's?
I don't know if historically they had been there.
They've been there forever, so.
Right, for a long time, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Andrew, uh, they've been, um, they've been operating there under the warehousing, transportation, uh, use. The issue there, along with what we were just talking about with the boat marinas, there have been properties there that have kind of expanded and developed. And so I'm, one of them in particular, we're trying to work with to bring into compliance and help them figure out how to develop these things, maintain some of the historical use that they've had that on there, and work with them to just, so that we can create a process in town where we can have a special permit process and utilize the tools that we have in our zoning bylaws to kind of protect the town from these uses to make sure that they're not detrimental to, to the neighborhoods and everything.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, the other part of it is the, like, this is specifically, the, this towing company is specifically, uh, works with the Marshfield Police Department to impound and store vehicles for evidence collection and storage, um, for the Marshfield Police Department, which is why the impound, um, portion is, is included on this article.
Okay.
So when you start doing that, isn't that like spot zoning? When you're gonna change zoning for one business because they're operating illegally in a certain area? Isn't that spot zoning?
Yeah, I know, I know what that is. Mr., Mr. Geman?
I'm gonna send this over to the legal part.
If there's a legitimate planning purpose for doing it, it's unlikely to be spot zoning, even if it's one lot.
Okay. All right. That's it for you, I think, right? Thank you, Mr. Geman. Article twenty seven. Emery, are you here?
I'll take it.
Nope.
She can take it.
You can take it, she's here, she's.
You're here, so go for it.
Uh, good evening, Article twenty seven, um, will allow, uh, the city or, uh, the town to vote in to accept, um, clause twenty-two J. This was part of the Heroes Act that was signed by the governor in, I believe, August of twenty twenty-four. Um, it will add an additional exemption amount for, um, veterans in the town. Last year, we voted in the COLA. This year, we're hoping to do, um, the twenty-two J at a hundred percent. It will, um, this is based off of, um, fiscal year twenty-five numbers. If we increase it by a hundred percent, it's, um, gonna be a hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, um, that will be needed, uh, for that. And I've worked with Peter and Meg, and for twenty-seven, we will have the funding for that included in the overlay.
Okay, any questions? Question?
Um, just briefly, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
So clause twenty-two J, um, provides an additional exemption up to a hundred percent of the amount of the tax exemption granted to veterans on their domiciles. As the general, uh, di- general additional exemption, the application, um, of the clause twenty-two J, I cannot reduce the tax owed by the, um, taxpayer what they'd owe by ten percent of the current assessed valuation. So basically, what we can do is increase that, and then that way they get a little bit more, um, help when they're paying their, their bills, their real estate bills. So currently, right now, um, twenty-two, uh, clause twenty-two is anybody from ninety to, uh, sorry, ten percent to ninety percent. Currently, they're four hundred plus the COLA, which is, I think, four eleven for this year. This will allow them to go, um, four hundred to eight hundred plus the COLA. And then the, um, twenty-two Es, uh, is a thousand plus the, um, COLA, but next year would be two thousand plus the COLA. So it gives them that little more additional help. There is a bill, um, HB three one oh two, uh, that's, we're hoping that gets passed through, that's expanding the senior property tax exemption, but that has not come through yet. So once hopefully that gets signed and comes through, we'll be able to do that for the seniors. That just hasn't come through yet.
Okay. Any other questions? I got a question.
Yep.
What are the exen- what are the exemptions now in regards to twenty-two J?
So twenty-two J is for the veterans, clauses twenty-two, twenty-two A, uh, twenty-two B, twenty-two C, twenty-two E, twenty-two F. Uh, those are for disabled veterans that live, um, in town and they own and occupy their property. There's other requirements, they have to own and occupy their property, um, they have to be VA-rated with a disability. There's other language within the law for them to qualify, uh, but if they qualify, this gives them the additional exemption up to a hundred percent.
A lot of communities.
Yes.
So it's for those that are disabled, is that what the?
Disabled veterans.
Okay.
Correct, you have to have a VA, um, rated, uh, disability, um, to qualify for that, in addition to other requirements, but you have to be VA, uh, disability rated.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks, Emery. All right. Article twenty-eight, Support of Public Works, Sean. And Diane, I guess. Yeah, it's gonna do up there.
I can do it from here.
Cool.
He's gonna need to do these. I can do it from here, 'cause you're gonna need to do the rest. So I just put this, I, uh, created this one with some help from, um, Attorney Galvin and the Planning Department, uh, because it came to my attention that there's been, um, incidences, uh, with water runoff from various sources affecting properties, nearby properties or adjacent properties. I'm not sure if adjacent might be, um, amended to just say nearby, because technically I think adjacent means exactly next to, but, so I might amend that to nearby properties or another word that doesn't specifically mean next to. So do I, do you want me to read it, or you guys have it, right?
No, just, yeah, we have it just.
Do you have questions about it? So it, it doesn't, it's, it's not, um, just 'cause I anticipate there'll be questions about flooding, so this doesn't, um, apply to flooding, like, that's coming in from the street or anything like that. It only applies to instances where there's been some kind of a change made on a property, and the water is displaced from that change to other, from that property to other properties, or a purposeful discharge of water, um, whether it was intended to land on another properties or not.
So you're basically saying it's encroachment of, of some kind of discharge water that, to another property from, from some other, some property, right? So you're saying it's, it's basically just unwanted water being run off from some property to another property, and you're just.
Right, if it causes flooding, but not, if it's just like floodwater and it's moving from one property to another unimpeded with no involvement of a property owner.
Right, no human.
That's not included, that doesn't.
That makes.
Diane, I can jump in if you want.
Yeah.
This is designed to address situations where somebody has set up their drainage system that encroaches on the property rights of someone nearby or adjacent. I think adjacent covers your situation. Contiguous would be the word you wouldn't want, but adjacent will work.
Okay.
For you. So, so if, if you set up your drainage and it goes into somebody else's property and erodes their backyard or, um, causes, you know, some other damage, that there's a recourse now under a bylaw that the only way that you could address currently, without the bylaw, is through civil action or a private court action. This, um, has been adopted in other communities and, and, uh, it works well.
Okay.
Is it retroactive? So if.
I don't know if it's retroactive, but if somebody's got a pre-existing condition and it causes, is causing damage and continues to cause damage, I, I think that would apply.
And, and who's the arbiter? Who makes the decision that this, this particular homeowner is encroaching on someone else? It's DPW or the Building Commissioner. Oh, no, DPW and the Building Commissioner. Requires consensus of two.
I, I've, I was under the impression that it is going to apply in existing conditions because it's being added to an existing bylaw.
It, it's a general bylaw, so it applies to any present situation where this is occurring.
Right, so it's not gonna just go, be mean going forward.
Right.
And I'll just add that I've gotten, uh, complaints and requests for enforcement for this specific condition for years and have never been able to do anything about it with anybody. I've just kind of told them, look, you gotta go talk to your neighbor and see if they can shoot that sump pump somewhere else or something like that. I literally have never had any ability to, to address it.
Got it. Question, Mr. Darcy?
Uh, yeah, so I think the question earlier was, would somebody be grandfathered? And if we pass this law, the answer is no.
No.
That, you know, if there was an existing dispute, this gives you a mechanism to do something. And then the genesis of this is there was someone who's basically, based on some work that a neighboring property had done for their stopper runoff, was causing their property to literally sink. So if you were to look at time-lapse photos, you would think that the street was building up and getting higher, but it wasn't. Their property was, their house was literally, their investment was sinking. So this finally gives the mechanism to enforce that and address that, hopefully protect other people in the future as well.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's, it's coming from a real-world applicable example.
Right, we just had, kind of had a void that, that no bylaw is covering like this exact thing.
Okay.
One last, on the penalties. After notice, day one's a hundred, day two's two hundred, and day three is three hundred, is that how that, is that how the penalty is written?
Let's do it, yeah.
And that continues.
So in this situation where I put a sump pump in and stumping in your basement three weeks ago.
I'm gonna put the hose right back in the yard.
And you, what's that?
I'm gonna put the hose right back in the yard.
No, but it's a, you're, you're away and, you know, I'm making the rid to it, you, you come home after three weeks and you find your, so that twenty-one days all gets loaded into this? Oh, it's after notice, after notice.
It actually requires the issuance of a citation for every day, so if there's no one there to cite them, it doesn't mean that it automatically just goes up. The citations have to be issued one hundred, two hundred, and then three hundred, and that's three hundred every day thereafter.
Later has to be notified.
Right, I mean, that's, that's right.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Article twenty-nine?
I have a question on that. Could, could the citation of a person who was operating a sump pump who then loses the use of their property or whose property becomes uninhabitable? Could that happen? Has that been thought about?
Answer for that.
So I can answer that, 'cause I've talked to everybody, basically, about this. So if a, a property owner who has a sump pump that isn't, they're not able to discharge it, like, they have conservation land or whatever it is, the town does work with them to make, um, give them a fix that will work for their property. There's always a way to fix it. So whether they have to build some kind of a drainage or, you know, there's other ways to do it, but they can't just allow it to flood neighboring properties or contiguous properties, or adjacent properties.
Okay. All right, Article twenty-nine?
Thank you.
Is that you, Sean?
I guess it is.
Welcome to the party.
Um, I'm Sean Patterson, the DPW Superintendent here in Marshfield, and, uh, Article twenty-nine is, uh, an article that is mandated by E, EPA to recodeify a recent storm on, um, management bylaw. I don't have the report with me that we got from the consultant that did the job for us, but, uh, it's a lot of reading, and if anybody has about an hour of their time they wanna use doing something different, they can go through it, but, uh, once we get everything finalized with the report we got from the consultant, we can put it online so everybody can read it. The adjustments they made.
Okay. Can you just give us like a high level real quick of what? Just for the public and just of what the exact article's covering, just that, is it just the discharges and?
How we manage our stormwater, what the regulations are, what you're not supposed to do, what we can do.
Okay. As the DPW?
As the DPW and also the public, you know, there's, there's regulations that everybody has to follow, um, to protect our resources.
Right.
Uh, what changes they made, I don't know right off the top of my head. That's, I'll have to look at the report and get back to everybody on that one at the next meeting.
Okay.
But I think it's good for everybody to read this over now, so when we do meet again, if there's any questions, I'll probably have a better answer for you.
Okay. Greg, do you have something?
The DPW is holding a public meeting tomorrow night on this subject.
Okay.
Sean, is it over at your building? Or is it here? The meeting tomorrow, Ken's having on this?
Yes.
Is it over at your building?
Yes.
All right, and then just for the Advisory Board and Select Board, um, make sure you look at Article three on page thirty-five because that section has been given to the Planning Board to be the, um, review agent.
Which one, I'm sorry, Greg, which one?
Article three, to the bottom of page thirty-five.
Got it, got it, got it, thank you. Okay. Article thirty. Sean?
Second.
Nope. No worries.
Okay. Article thirty. The purpose of this article is to obtain the necessary easement and to reclassify portions of town land for highway purposes in order to reconstruct the Willow Street Bridge.
Okay.
In other words, we're looking for easements for certain pieces of property that are, uh, in the area of the Willow Street Bridge, so we can rebuild the bridge. And this will be funded out of chapter ninety. I don't wanna say it's like twenty thousand dollars. We're going to, uh, purchase some of these pieces of property or parts of it.
Got it. So the properties are listed below, correct?
That's correct.
And the amounts? That would cost, that's your estimated cost?
Twenty thousand, six hundred.
Yeah, per, per property, your estimated cost per property to, for the damages of the easement?
To obtain those pieces of property from the individuals, so we can do the adjustments we need to make on the bridge.
Got it, okay. Any other questions? Now, how, how bad is the bridge, Sean? It looks pretty tough.
It's in rough shape. It's something we've been trying to. We've had it inspected, but it's something we're trying to get done for about, as long as I've been here.
For a long time.
Eleven years.
It, it's time to fix that thing. Okay?
It's time.
Any other questions? I don't know. Is the bridge staying like the same in regards to width and all that, or are you having, it's gonna be bigger with sidewalks?
I don't know. I think it's gonna be a little bit bigger.
A little bit?
I don't have the design in front of me, but I can't, I can't tell you specifically how big it's gonna be. It's gonna be a one, it's still gonna be one-way, it's not gonna be two ways.
What is it?
It's still gonna be a one-way. So it's not gonna be much larger.
Oh, all right, so, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, all right, there you go. Okay. Article 31.
That's me as well.
Yep.
This is an article I go for every year. It allows us the ability to do work on unaccepted roads. In other words, the only way we can do emergency repairs or temporary repairs on unaccepted roadways is by following mass general law, which is chapter 40, section 6N, that gives us the ability to do temporary repairs on roads as long as the town meeting votes for the authorization to spend that money on unaccepted roads. I would say 55% of the roads in town are unaccepted. This gives us an ability to do some work on them, probably not enough, but it gets us by for emergency purposes. This is one of my number one articles that I always ask for. It's number one on my list.
Okay. Any questions from the advisory board, select board?
Sean, I-
Senator, again, sorry, of towns that are unaccepted.
I would say 55% at least. Are unaccepted roads.
Is the, um, where's the funding coming from?
Free cash.
Free cash?
Is it?
Okay. This be another opportunity for just operating budget line item?
Yes, it would. It's never been done in the past. It's something I have to ask for every year, but I, I don't know. Maybe Attorney Galvin may be able to shed some light on that, but, because it does have to get voted in by town meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, any questions, Sean?
I don't know. This could be put into the budget, or do we have to go through a capital budget process every year? Is it because-
This should be an annual funded thing. It should be a part of the operational budget. It shouldn't be. This isn't like a one-time expense. This is a recurring expense, so this should be budgeted.
Maybe Peter, you can put that in your exit.
So it's, yeah, so it's a recurring expense, but it is not unusual to fund it out of free cash. I've seen, I've seen other communities do a similar thing where they'll, they'll fund it every year out of free cash, but because they don't know how, because they, they need flexibility in, in budgeting it. They can't go one, you know, if, if you have a tight year and you built, built it in, you know, are you only gonna put $100,000 into it? So funding it out of free cash is not preferable, but I've seen it done for this purpose. Norwell had an annual article for it every year. Yeah, so it's not ideal, but it's not unusual.
You're correct by saying that because it has varied. It's how much I get, it's-
Yeah.
How much they have.
Okay. Article 32. Sean?
Okay, so Article 32 is, this is funding that would provide necessary funds to maintain, repair, and replace broken playground equipment and necessary repairs to playgrounds as needed. This funding would also allow the DPW to hire a licensed playground contractor to make these necessary repairs as needed. Again, this is something that should be built into the yearly budget, but we wanted to put this on right away because we have done extensive work to a lot of the playgrounds. And in the years passed since I've been here, we've never ever funded for maintenance, so I think it's time we started.
So when you say transfer from available funds, what available, would that also be-
Free cash.
You're not looking for an FTE here. You, you're talking a contractor? Or are you talking an additional person?
No, contractor.
Contract.
Okay. Any other questions?
I know. Sean, you can use CPC money for it, so I mean, how much?
Not the maintenance.
Yeah, it's, 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 they'll crack down on, if it's for maintenance, if it's, if it's renovation or complete overhaul, you could use it, but for repair, they'll jump on you for it.
No. You can do replacements, just like that.
If it's full replace-
Yeah.
If it's like a total-
Well, that's not what I'm getting around to. I mean, the whole thing is that the CPC, it's like, well-
All the money I got to do these playgrounds came from CPC.
Yeah.
To rebuild them.
But like you're saying right here in this article, you're looking to do-
Repairs and maintenance.
Repairs, maintenance, but I imagine if there was a broken swing, that, would that be-
That's considered maintenance.
Yeah. So the whole thing is you take the whole swing off.
You take the whole swing set down and-
No, 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 just the swing itself.
Equipment, you might get away with it, but if you're just doing maintenance, maintenance repair, like fixing cracks and, and, and-
Yeah, just, exactly. I'm just talking about the equipment. The equipment you can get replaced through CPC if you needed. So that's what I'm, I'm wondering here is, all right, we give 75,000, but we also have another funding source to get equipment that needs to be replaced through the CPC.
I have that in place already. What I'm looking for is maintenance money.
Yep. What, in place, what, the CPC?
We have money for equipment in CPC. I already have some. I'm looking outside of rebuilding or constructing to maintain, which we've never done in the past. That has to come out of the general fund somehow, whether it be free cash or whichever way we decide to go, but this is why I'm bringing this up.
No, I-
Now.
Replacing a single swing is maintenance.
Yes.
Replacing the entire swing set would be CPC money.
No. CPC you can use as the replace swings. The swing.
What are some of the things you would do?
Replace a swing, a part of a swing, a broken slide, a piece of a slide, no, fencing. If we had a tear in the PIP, get that fixed. Things that break. Excuse me? Yes. Miscellaneous items that, that fell out of the construction and of the portion of what we, we've done in the past.
How you doing the maintenance now?
We don't. We don't have any money for it.
Yeah, but if the swing broke, I'm sure it's getting fixed.
No?
Not all the time.
Sometimes it's Good Samaritan stuff, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And there's been an issue in the past where, you know, a lot of the people that did it, that raised money and did the repairs, but a lot of those wells are dry now.
Right.
And then nobody really took responsible, responsibility for the playgrounds when they started going, you know, into disarray.
Right.
So I think this is gonna help us in the long run.
How much of the 75,000 is for the hiring of the contractor, would you say, percentage-wise?
I don't really know until I get into it. This is the first time I asked for it. I, we kind of picked a number out.
So some, something to think about.
To start with.
There's gotta be someone on your staff that might be able to get licensed. I don't know what it takes to get a playground-
Those are things we're working on, but I need us to start with something.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Diane Jordan Bancroft Street, Chair of Public Works. Respectfully to the new members of the advisory board, this has been a conversation that has been going on for over a year. And so I hope that before town meeting, anybody could just review, maybe the select board meetings or the DPW meetings where we talked about this, or any of the available content, of which there's hours and hours and hours about playgrounds. We need maintenance money, period. So I just hope that that happens because if we get to town meeting and people, anybody starts, you know, kind of, not that people can't say what they want to say, they can, but it's not, it's not gonna be a good scene at town meeting if people get up and start questioning whether the playgrounds need maintenance money after everything we've gone through, because it's not been pretty and it's not been fun for residents to have to beg, you know, for the playgrounds to be fixed, really. That, that's really kind of how they felt, and so we're just kind of almost there with this. I'd love it if it could just be smooth. I'm not trying to tell anybody what to do, but maybe just like review some of the old, what's gone on. I hope that this is, I hope this is not sounding rude. I'm not meaning it to be rude, I promise. It's just been very frustrating for everybody, so.
Go ahead.
The only is that I think everything should be questioned regardless of what it is. My concern is that we have funding from different places and, you know, we're getting 75,000 maintenance, but we also have a CPC fund that we can tap into in regards to replacing things in the playground if need be. So I like to see, stretch that 75,000 dollars out as much as possible, but also use them what we can, especially the CPC funding, to accommodate stretching that 75,000 dollars out. So that's the way I look at it.
Okay. Any other questions concerned?
It just sounds like the, the end result is it should be a line item budget, just like facilities maintenance, right?
Mm-hmm.
You probably don't have a good historical trend of what, what you've been costing to pay.
I don't. And I need to put something in place as soon as possible, so we just got four playgrounds up and running with-
We need a work order system in this town.
Yeah.
Okay. Article 33. That your spare wa, spare wastewater effluent pump?
Yes, it is. So these are very critical pumps. They're going on 15 years old, and what the wastewater superintendent is looking for is, he wants to have a, I'll read the explanation, wastewater treatment facility has effluent pumps that are used to discharge and treat the wastewater. While the pumps are periodically rebuilt, they are all aging. In the lead time, the ordering these pumps is 30 weeks. In other words, if we order one tomorrow, we won't see it for another 30 weeks. And should a pump fail, so wastewater would like to have, to purchase a spare pump to have on the shelf ready for any failures that we have. I, I whole highly agree with this. Like he said to me, it takes 30 weeks to get the pump here, and if something, one of them goes down, we're in a little bit of a problem down there. So I'm, I'm all in favor that we get a spare pump and put it on-
I'm assuming free cash, available funds?
It's retained earnings, I believe.
Retained earnings?
Yeah.
Wastewater retained?
Yes.
If you lose a pump, Sean, what, what are you down to in terms of the?
There's three of them.
So down one-third of your output?
Yes. And one was just rebuilt. We're gonna get another one done, but he wants to have a spare one just in case it, we do it now.
I understand critical spares, that's.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, Sean, all three of them are identical, obviously?
Yes, sir.
And they're located in the wastewater treatment facility?
Correct.
Okay. And what about the pumps, like in the booster stations, like next to my house? What's the story with those? Do we need spares for those?
I think those are all, have been done recently, so they're, they're good to go. He was more worried about the ones in the plant because they haven't been replaced in 15 years.
Right. And so are all three operational at the same time, or is it, they take turns?
As far as I'm concerned, they're all operational at the same time.
Right. So you need all three pumping together to-
Yes.
All right.
He can shut one down to replace it, which he has done in the past and get bought, but you don't want to do it for a long period of time.
Right.
You had that situation over the summer, right? You had one.
And we also had during the, the bad storms in March.
Yep.
Where it was nearly catastrophic.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Article 34. Sean, isn't this typically a capital budget article?
It is. We, we never met with them.
Why is that?
We were never, I don't, we never had a meeting. I can't, I can't tell you why.
It's interesting. Okay.
So we've always in the past, as you know, met with capital, advisory next, and then the joint meeting.
Yeah.
We kind of jumped the larynx, just did the, the joint meeting.
Okay. All right. So go ahead. You're requesting a number of new vehicles here.
Yes. I will explain in the article. The DPW would like to replace and/or add two vehicles from wastewater for the vehicles from water and two administration vehicles. Our fleet is aging, and while we maintain our vehicles, eventually the cost to repair no longer makes financial sense. It is important that our fleet can respond quickly to the needs of the town in reliable vehicles. So some of these vehicles, two in wastewater and a couple in the water department, we took off the road. They're just, they're not gonna pass inspection, they're rotted out. We have kept them on the road for several years, way past their life expectancy, which is usually seven years. I think a lot of these trucks are 12 years old. The supervisor's vehicles, my car and the deputy superintendent's car, they're both 2018 Explorers. They have some life in them, and what we usually do typically is take those vehicles and revert them back into the fleet so the engineers and, and people on staff during the day have those vehicles to drive. And we upgrade to a newer vehicle. I'm not as concerned about the administration cars as I am the vehicles that we need for water and wastewater.
Okay. Will the, will, before town meeting, will capital budget committee have the opportunity to review these and make a recommendation?
I would hope so. Yeah.
Have they reached out to you at all?
No.
All right. Okay. Interesting.
Question?
Yes.
Hi, thank you, David Soich. I'm just wondering, I'm just kind of curious, why on the, the two, there are two listed here, $133,000, a new Chevy K-1500 and a Chevy Tahoe SUV as, according to this, administrative vehicles? Why do you need a K-1500 and a Tahoe for administrative vehicles when a sedan would be just as good? I mean, you don't have to answer that, but it's-
I'll answer it.
You asked a question, let me answer it.
We go out in the middle of snowstorms, blizzards, when the, we have flooding down brown rock, we need something to get us there that's halfway decent and reliable. The deputy superintendent wanted a pickup truck because he wants to be able to carry tools in the back, so if he has any catch bases he can go clean out when he sees in the road, he'll take care of it. Me personally, I don't care what I drive, as long as I can get from point A to point B and get through a snowstorm safe. The Explorers work fine for me, for me in the past, but they don't make the same ones that we use, we have currently. I picked out a vehicle, I mean, it could be an Expedition, it could be an Explorer, it could be a Tahoe. Everybody's going to Tahos these days, so we got a price on those. Again, those aren't as critical as the other vehicles are.
Okay.
So I'm not challenging the need for the vehicles, but it just seems like protocols are off and, and we're bypassing a, a committee that we really need their input. You don't want to have a, a food fight on town meeting floor that they don't agree with you.
I don't disagree with you at all, but somebody has to reach out to us to have a meeting.
I think you have it in your power to reach out and, and make, make it happen.
I don't even know who's on the committee anymore, so.
I can, I can contact-
Thank you.
He was here tonight.
A little leadership is all I'm looking for.
They want to meet next week.
Yeah, Jack Griffin's chair.
Try to get you on.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Any other questions?
So, Sean, like, what makes these pickups so expensive though? Like, I just priced a brand new F-450 dump and it was 120, a Colonial Ford. Why are these like 220?
I don't see a truck in here for $220,000, not for one.
So how, how much of the individual prices of these?
Oh, you're looking at one of the dump trucks.
Right. I just priced, you know, you know the dump truck I have, right? So I just priced a replacement for it, it was 120, Colonial Ford, F-4, F-450, dual-wheel, four-wheel drive, XLT. It was, it was like 120.
So we have to get free quotes, and we usually do. Again, the question was asked to me last year about a lawnmower, why it costs $285,000, whichever the, whatever the price was. I don't disagree because five years ago I spent $85,000 on that same lawnmower, and now it's 265, 285,000.
I don't know about the prices of lawnmowers, but I know about the prices of dump trucks, because I have one. I just priced a new one.
This is the price we got with the plow and all, everything ready to go on it.
Okay. All right. Article, that's it for you.
That's it for me.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Article 35 is citizen petitions. Mr. Carrier still here? There he is. Dave, thank you. Whoever you like. You can be there, you can sit down.
Evening.
Yep.
Okay. As, you know, as we've done for every town, annual town meeting, um, since I had first started working with the Board of Public Works and the engineering staff, Rod, Rod Parcicino, we were always seeking the funding for grading the unpaved private ways, um, again, falling under the law that, uh, says that you have to have a town meeting vote in order to spend private fun, you know, public funds on private property. Um, the issue has come around where, um, at least in a few of the circumstances this past year, you know, uh, the people residing on those roads felt that they needed more than just being graded twice a year. Uh, the current seventy thousand dollars can cover the two gradings and, uh, you know, that's already there coming out of free cash into the capital budget for the purpose of the grading. Uh, some years it is not spent if the weather doesn't create the issue. And I saw that happen back when it used to be thirty-five thousand dollars when I started with the town in two thousand and five, and was stayed that way through two thousand and eleven when I finished as superintendent in town. And, uh, we would just revert it back each year. This doesn't change any of that. The actual language, uh, that I have provided to the board and, uh, was submitted with the, uh, article when we sent in the, uh, signed petition, uh, is looking to get BPW, select board, advisory board, and the capital budget committee all coming together, agreeing that this is one of those repetitive things. And I would add that, uh, what Sean presented, where he's looking to take care of the paved private ways, where he was looking for two-hundred thousand dollars for the maintenance that has to be done on those for keeping safety, for the same purposes, you know, um, that also is coming out of free cash. And it is likely thing, to me, this is one of those things that should be a pro forma type decision because these are citizens, you know, there are some two-hundred-and-sixty residences, um, that I was able to document being on the paved on private ways. And, uh, you know, they were paying significant taxes, and the seventy thousand dollars just represented roughly seven percent of the tax money the town received from those folks. And that is now, those numbers, um, both from the tax dollars and the cost could change, you know, but I, to my mind, it should be something that actually is kind of built into how the town is approaching this each year so that these people are taken care of. It is a matter of public safety in some circumstances so that fire or police can access for injuries, illnesses, or a fire, obviously. Um, the other issue is that I think, um, the fourth, the second, the third and fourth gradings could actually, um, be approved but be treated, um, by the Board of Public Works, the select board, the, um, you know, capital budget and the advisory board when they're reviewing it as something that is a contingency type item, you know. And that would depend in a lot of cases, how weather happens and what happens with it. Um, there is one other thing, um, that I think is also important to have a consideration for, and that is we do have some, uh, close to the public private ways. Bluefish Cove comes immediately to mind for me. Um, that does occasionally still need grading, and one of the things that, um, is basically your funding base down for there is the fact that those people have, you know, three enterprise division contracts, basically, the residents. They have a sewer, they have water, and they are also getting solid waste. And the public works department, because of water and sewer in particular, have basically easements by which they can come in and do whatever work has to be done without seeking permission for private purposes, much like the electric companies and the gas companies can do and the phone companies can do. And to me, that means that, um, on some occasion, if it comes up, from the retained earnings of the appropriate sources, it may be merging water and sewer, for example, or trash because it might be a trash truck damages, that the road could be great. And I don't think there's anything that would prevent that because it is an easement repair under those circumstances. Uh, that is obviously a discretionary item that has to be considered by, uh, the Board of Public Works. But I think it is an item that should be considered when one concerns these people. The other thing about the folks that are like that, and I'm gonna add this to the discussion, is, um, those people have been paying the maximum amount into the enterprise divisions of the town. And to the extent that, and I know this is an ongoing discussion, you know, the indirect charges, you know, have been in excess of what, you know, uh, they should have been, those people are kinda double-hit because that means that if they're itemizing deductions accumulatively over the years, they're losing money because the money that's in the indirect charges and is transferred over to the general fund is not deductible when they're trying to figure out tax deductions. Whereas if that money was coming out of the real estate taxes, then it would be for them for their itemized deductions. So I think in those circumstances, some of those people are seeing and experiencing a double financial hit. Um, you know, the bottom line would be that I believe, uh, the additional seventy thousand dollars should come out of free cash. And I did have one, uh, unusual thing when I was looking actually at Steve Contos' property up on T-Rock Lane, where it almost appeared as though the property of the unpaved roadway that passed in front of his house was in his assessed real estate square footage of land because the property showed as one-point-oh-one acre. And, you know, that just point-oh-one acre, when you took the width of the roadway and its frontage, almost translated into a perfect calculation of that, slightly underneath it, and knowing in life, a lot of things are rounded up to the nearest number. Uh, that would be something that needs to be done with a survey, and I have mentioned that to Steve, that he should look at that closely. Because if he has been paying those taxes these years, that would mean he's given him extra money that could have been used to grade his road for himself. But I, uh, know that we had a hundred and thirty-two signatures when we turned this in for, um, an inclusion as a town meeting article. And we had an additional sixty-some-odd that Steve and his, one of his cohorts had put together two that came in after we had turned it in and it was not needed. So you're looking at about a hundred and ninety people. And like I said, I know of at least two-hundred-and-sixty residences on these unpaved private ways, and that means there's nominally five-hundred-and-twenty voters out there. And-
Dave, I have a question.
Uh, one other item, if I could. And I also looked at the, all the, all the private ways, and when you sum all of the private ways in, uh, that seventy thousand dollars is like a two percentage piece, you know, that's both paved and unpaved. And I did that mainly because there are a number of unpaved private ways where there may be two or three residences that are on an unpaved section of the roadway. And, uh, you know, under those circumstances, it might be in the interest of the unpaved, of the paved private way to help fund it. There's a question. Sorry.
So they're not questioning the need, but something that we're agreeing has to be done four times a year doesn't seem to fit the definition of a capital expenditure. Am I wrong in that?
No, it, it would be more like a recurring expense if you're gonna do it, if you're gonna mandate, it's four.
We're writing it down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Traditionally, it has always been in the capital budget, going back to the days, when the thirty-five thousand was the threshold at which it had to start.
Any other questions?
Just wondering if the, if the article is even legal.
Uh, Mr. Galvin?
I didn't think so.
Doesn't have a funding mechanism? Kind of warned that this would be an issue if we didn't have a funding mechanism. The article doesn't have one.
Thanks.
Couldn't be amended to include one because the warrant's already covered from its beyond scope. We discussed this with the-
Excuse me, counselor, if I may. Since we have been funding this out of, you know, the free cash in the past at seventy thousand dollars, ever since about twenty sixteen, I think, going forward, you know, uh, why is it now not able to be done that way?
First of all, public ways can be funded with public funds. Private ways that are open to the public can be funded as long as you're doing it in accordance with our bylaw that allows certain public ways to be, certain private ways that are open to the public being approved. Your article here, um, is in the nature of resolution. It doesn't have a funding source or mechanism.
Excuse me.
I'm not, uh, excuse me, you interrupted me.
Well, I, I provided the language that I wanted to see in the vote, okay, to the select board the other night, you know, last night. And I had provided it prior to that as part of the submission of the signed petitions. And therefore, the piece that basically says that the Board of Public Works, the select board, you know, the advisory board and the capital budget committee approached this as they always have, how is that not legitimate?
The article as submitted didn't have a funding mechanism. And I warned you before you submitted the article, it's gotta have a funding mechanism. If it doesn't have a funding mechanism, it can't be added.
Well, since it is the existing funding, has always existed, I think at town meetings, there may be a position that doesn't agree with you, sir.
Do you have any other questions? Mr. Rowland?
I don't. Is anybody else?
Can I just ask?
I would, one, one item I haven't mentioned is when we presented this to, actually Steve Contos did it, uh, at the Board of Public Works, they said to do the citizen's petition for this. Okay, at that time, there was no specific statement about having to provide any funding that was different from the existing funding. Okay? The only time I saw that was in an email exchange between you and I believe it was, uh, the town council, I mean, town clerk, rather, and, excuse me. Um, it was not addressed to me. It wasn't addressed to Steve.
I don't, the town council, we do not word citizen's petition articles, we don't change the terms. But I've been saying since I first saw it that there was no funding mechanism, there was a problem here.
That's all I have. Just a second. Ms. Keith?
Um, Pam Keith, Smokey Bridge. I'm just, I'm confused. It says, in my warrant anyways, it says, will the town meeting vote to? And then it's blank. Like, it's, it's not even, there's no wording here to say what we're voting on. Like, are we voting to amend something? Are we voting to add a bylaw? Are we voting to do a policy? It doesn't, it's, it's just blank. So-
Well-
I'm, I'm just questioning, the format seems incorrect.
If I might, sir? Amen. Um, this is not the first town meeting article I have ever seen where what is the language in the warrant does not match the actual words that go up on the screen by which we vote. And the way, the letters and the wording that I had, you know, certainly I think fits to that by my opinion, you know. Although, I recognize that you don't agree with that, counselor, and that's your privilege. I would hope that we will have the support of the select board in the matter to present the vote in that manner. Uh, you have had an opportunity on more than one occasion, uh, when I provided the data and the information to have corrected me on something, and I had said I would assist you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Galvin, Attorney Galvin.
Yeah.
Why does he need a funding mechanism when it's coming from free cash?
Well, there's no mention of this money coming from free cash in the article that's proposed. This, that's the point, there was no funding mechanism?
It's requested to come from capital funding.
It should have come from capital funding?
It's not a capital expense, it's O and M.
Well, much of free cash goes into the capital budget. And I would point out that the interim town administrator made that mention in regard to the two-hundred-odd-thousand that Sean was speaking on earlier.
Could I just, I think that, could that two-hundred-thousand-dollar article be used for, is it supported to be used for the purposes?
I, I think the Board of Public Works is free to do whatever they need to do with any funds that they have allotted to them. And if they choose to spend the money this way, and it's a roadway that's private, open to the public, I have no objection.
So, and then alternatively, would it be, could the, could the amendment or the article be amended upward in amount, or ten percent?
Well, the other article could be amended up by, yeah, we allow ten percent.
So that's your vehicle to get this. You can use the article that, um, Mr. Patterson previously discussed for the purpose that you're looking for.
Mm-hmm.
And come back at a future town meeting with it worded in a way that will meet muster and, and, um, you know, and get it done rather than trying to put a square peg in a round hole. So you can get, you could probably get funding for the purpose that you want in the interim, and then in the spring, come back with an article that's worded correctly.
Again, I will make the statement that, you know, I was told that this would be supported by the Board of Public Works, and I would hope that if it is legally decided and opposed to have it happen, and it, and it's eliminated from town meeting, that the Board of Public Works would step up on this because they were who we approached to do this initially, because that's where it has always been done. And it was by their request that we do it as a citizen's petition. Okay? And that was, I was specifically asked to assist Steve Contos by, um, the deputy, uh, of the board and, you know. And the, and the, the, as a group, they stated, you know, will you help? And I said, yes.
I think Sean, it's something to say.
Go ahead. Sean, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I speak for myself and the Board of Public Works, that we appreciate what Mr. Carrier's trying to do. On another note, there is no funding mechanism. We're already halfway into a budget, if not, I would say a third of way into the budget. Normally, if something like this passes on town meeting floor, we have to take money from another agency within town. I am totally against that. I don't believe in that policy. Uh, we will get by for the rest of this year. I think if that's the case, we do entertain this in the spring, uh, when we're working on a, setting up our new budget for FY twenty-seven. Under no circumstances do I wanna take money from anybody else. I don't think that's fair. That's not how we do business. That's not how I do business. Uh, again, I appreciate what Mr. Carrier's trying to do. I, I understand what he's trying to do. We do have seventy thousand dollars in place to do unpaved roads. As Mr. Galvin said, that two-hundred-thousand dollars, if it gets voted in at this next town meeting, we can use that to supplement some more of that grading that we need to do on those gravel roads. I think if I'm correct in what you said, Mr. Galvin, that we can use that.
Yeah, you can, you can use that as long as you abide by the bylaw requirement that it be limited to like fixing potholes and doing the grading.
Yep, I understand that. But I do appreciate what Mr. Carrier's trying to do. I know where he's coming from, and I know that other people are looking for more grading. Uh, we don't have the resources right now to do that. We try, we do it once in the spring and once in the fall. But again, we will make do for the rest of this year. I'd like to re-entertain this in the spring if possible, uh, when we have a little more clarity, and I think we have the article written properly. But under no circumstances, again, do I wanna take money out of anybody else's pocket.
Mr. Kelly?
You know what? We're talking about funding sources and, and what the funding sources are. I mean, you look at Article thirty-two, just for example, it says available funds. But that doesn't state a funding source, in my opinion. So, but then Dave just says the, uh, capital funding. So, I mean, what would, can you explain that to me, Bob, in regards to available funds, what's the differences where it doesn't specify a funding source?
What are you talking about? Which article?
Well, for example, Article thirty-two, just says transfer of available funds, but it doesn't specify a funding source, like you're saying.
Sure. Well, that's an article that actually says how you're going to come up with the money. We don't have the specific source of funds there, but it says transfer from available funds, and free cash are, we know now to be available. The difference between that, that Article thirty-two and Mr. Carrier's article is there is no mention of a funding source. There's a idea, and I agree with him, that people that live on private roadways, we should do as much as we can within the bounds of what's legal. But there's no funding authorization in his article, and that's what concerns me.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. You addressing this article?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, so, um, uh, we did definitely-
Oh, so, we did definitely all agree that we would really, we really want to help, you know, these roads be better, okay? And suggested that the way to maybe make that happen was through a citizens petition, but we didn't offer any guidance or advice on the wording or anything like that. So, so my question is, though, can this be amended at town meeting to add a funding source? Is that possible? To, can this article be amended?
What you need to deal with, at town meeting, the law is they're wanting to people to say, here's what we're going to be talking about. What I see in this article is there's no ask. There's not, it says the current DPW funding is $70,000. There's not an ask in this article to say, I want to put $70,000 into this article. So, people have been warned that they're going to be asked to spend $70,000 on this private road article. So, and one of the problems with private petitions is the petitioners are writing the articles and don't always get all the nuances of the words got to be phrased in order to make it correct. Like saying from available funds, you know, transfer from available funds $70,000. People are then warned that they're going to be asked to cover the $70,000 for that article.
And that can't be, that's not an amendment that could be?
You can't make an amendment because there is nothing to amend.
Okay.
You can't put $70,000 in an article that nobody knows is there. Because people may have, not that I think they would have an issue with it particularly, but somebody might have an issue with the fact that you're spending $70,000 on private roads, but it's not a public road, so why are we spending money on $70,000 on private roads? I mean, how could that click? So, you can't add, if we took, as we said on the other article that we had about private roads, and it's a $200,000 request from the DPW, by tradition, I would argue 10% overage. You can go down to zero, you can eliminate something completely because somebody's warned that you could spend $200,000 on private roads, and if somebody proposed raising that number up to 220, that's within the scope of what people could reasonably expect. If you're going to spend $200,000 and it ends up being 220, it's not that big a difference. You can't go to 270, that's too big an increase. So you can't put the whole $70,000 bucks in that particular article, but you can get some money out of it if that's the way things want to go.
So if we, if we were to amend, I'm sorry, were you done, I didn't interrupt your?
You can't amend this article, you can't amend Mr. Carrier's article to put money in it.
Right, so if we were to amend Article 31 up 10%, or another, was it?
Is that the one that was, I don't know what the numbers, is that the one that was $200,000?
That's road reconstruction money, so.
So that's the same thing, it's a private roads article, it's $200,000. I'd be fine with somebody making an amendment for $20,000 to add to that article to make it 220. And then you could take that money and put it towards Mr. Carrier's article.
So that's not specifically private roads, that's road reconstruction.
Right, but it.
I think we just said that that would be.
Yes, it's, way it's often used is to, but it's all road, all road reconstruction issues. It's not just for private roads.
That's.
All road reconstruction issues.
I don't, I don't believe that that's what that said, I'm not sure.
Road reconstruction, road reconstruction.
It's road reconstruction, so it's not.
Road reconstruction, 32?
Article 31?
31.
Oh, you, we were talking about.
Road reconstruction, so it's not limiting it to being public roads in that, the way that's phrased, that's not limiting it to public roads, you could use it on private roads, I believe.
So the, Sean.
I have a question.
The main purpose of this, oh, I'm sorry, am I getting somebody off? The main purpose of the $200,000 is, it's, it's to cover anything that doesn't fall into the purview of Chapter 90. Now, we can now use Chapter 90 money on accepted roadways. We do primarily use the $200,000 for road construction money on unaccepted roads, but it has been used to do some work on accepted roads that we don't, we don't want to do a request for, or we don't have the money in Chapter 90, or we have it set for another project. So, if it's a small project outside of the scope of Chapter 90, we will use it as well. But it, it covers everything, from accept, unaccepted to accepted roadways. Now, we also have another article, which is $70,000, you hear everybody talk about, that is for the grading of unpaved roads. We use that to grade all the roads that are gravel twice a year. Now, if we wanted to take an extra $20,000 and throw it into that kitty, the $70,000, that's fine, or if you want to put it in the rural construction fund, that's fine as well. Either way, it will work for us.
Well, the actual vote that I have proposed and provided is actually addressing grading the roads four times for the year. And obviously, right now, we are still in the same fiscal year, and, you know, voting for, supporting for gradings is certainly to me something that this special town meeting can functionally do, since in particular, if additional funding has to actually come up that can't be provided from the discretionary funds of the Board of Public Works, it can be an item that is placed into the spring special town meeting, which would then have the funding available for when it is probably most likely needed to take care of the damage that heavy spring rains and melting winter water does to most of the unpaved private ways, rather than saying that they can't do a vote now to have the position of four. To me, that is just, you know, not being fair to the people on those unpaid private ways, and, you know, that's the position I'm taking.
I want comment.
I, I can agree with that. I think that if they can, if he can present his petition and let people vote on the need and desire to take care, better care of these roads, you can then state, we're gonna, if it passes, we're going to come for specific funding in the spring because we weren't able to figure out how to do it now, or whatever. Right? Could that, can that fly? Can you do that at a town meeting?
The article's on the warrant.
Okay.
It'll be voted on.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Pleasure.
Just to bring some clarity, Sean and Dave, if you had a line item budget for $340,000, 200 for unaccepted roads, 70 and 70 for four gradings, wouldn't that solve this problem?
That would provide the funding here and now, but, you know, we are in a fiscal year.
We go round and round on these things.
But we're in a fiscal year right now where.
$30,000 to take care of the roads that aren't accepted.
Well.
Is that a simple answer? Without taking the 90 minutes to discuss?
I, I do not have access to the budgeting information to really make a judgment on that, I would have to rely on Sean and Diane.
What was the question?
But it seems to me ridiculous to go to, in front of a couple thousand people, like we just did in this room, and try to explain that, when it comes down to is, road maintenance and match meal needs $340,000. End of story. How much that we get, that's another story.
Private road maintenance, yes.
That's a budget, budget thing.
Okay. Thanks to you, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Article 36 is a, says a petition, Diane Jordan?
That's me.
I know you're here. Can you walk us through it?
Yeah, sure. So this is for the alcohol, this is for alcohol beverages, so, last town, so last December town meeting, the town alcohol beverages bylaw was changed, and then there was a floor amendment made, which hasn't been approved by the AG yet, is my understanding, okay? So, my bylaw seeks to limit special licensed, special one-day liquor licenses for only, which are given for any public land, okay? Any, any land, any public land, okay? So it seeks to limit those licenses to only fundraisers hosted by nonprofit or charitable organization that is open to the public, not private, which with all net proceeds from the event, after the deduction of reasonable expenses, are awarded to the named charitable recipient. So, the Select Board having a licensee before them would need to like check all that information. And then, also could be given to a public, a public event that's, the purpose is fostering community fellowship or civic engagement, with no commercial events being eligible for a special license for a one-day liquor license. So, but I'm going to need to amend this at town meeting to take out the last, the last line in the main part of the article, where it says, or Select Board approved 12C licensed caterers. I have to take that line out. That was the floor amendment that was made at the last town meeting in December. And so I had to include it in this so that it would match what was passed at town meeting, but I amend that out because it doesn't actually apply to the MGL 13814 law. 12C caterers don't apply to that law because 12C caterers are for private events only. So, sorry, I probably made that more confusing than I needed to.
Okay.
So basically, this is saying that the Select Board can only approve one-day liquor license on public land for fundraisers, charitable events, community events that are open to the public, and not for commercial events or for-profit events.
Got it. Okay.
That makes sense?
That makes sense to me.
And there will be an amendment, I'll amend that 12C licensed caterers out.
Well, it gives them the, it gives them the power to, to make exceptions to charitable organizations, basically, in non-profi, I mean, nonprofit and charitable.
So it limits.
Right.
The ability of the Select Board to give a one-day liquor license, and it can only give it to nonprofits, nonprofit events, charitable events.
Okay.
Community fundraisers like the races or whatever.
Right, got it. Okay.
Or community events, right, okay. So no questions on that?
Well, I don't know yet. Any questions from the Advisory Board? Any questions from the Select Board?
Yep.
Bob, is this a legal article?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other comments?
She has, she has a question.
Okay. Ms. Keith?
The, I'm glad she wants to say she wants to remove this 12C licensed caterer because it, it didn't grammatically seem to make sense to me when it was added, and it still doesn't now. And I know it's not her language, it was already added on the floor town meeting. But, a 12C, the Daniel Webster State does wedding receptions, and I assume at some times they would have a 12C caterer, or, there's, put it this way, it's a pri, it doesn't matter whether it's a 12C caterer, it doesn't, that part doesn't matter, but they're serving alcohol, well, it does matter. If they get a one-day license for beer and wine, it's still, it's a private event. So this bylaw still reads that no one can drink alcohol on town property unless they get a one-day license, which would be beer and wine only, for these public events. So it doesn't, does this not leave room for private events like a wedding reception at the Daniel Webster? And a 12C caterer can do private events on, say, private property by just informing the town, they don't need a one-day license, they can serve hard alcohol. So I do believe, as a matter of fact, I do believe that person who presented in front of, front of view at one point, she has done wedding receptions at the Daniel Webster State. I don't know whether she's gotten a one-day license, but if she has her 12C license, she can serve hard alcohol at the Daniel Webster State if we allow it. So I don't know whether we want to exclude that or not, but at the same time, this, but at the same time, I think this seems to exclude, because everything in here is open to the public, it excludes private wedding receptions.
Yeah. I can answer that. So, the, the example of a wedding reception is a private event. So, that's a different situation. So it's not, it's, you know, a wedding, it's invite only, they've rented the space, they can have a 12C caterer because that's their purview, they do private events, where, at places that don't have a bar. And they don't have to come before the Select Board to do those events, that's what that license gives them the ability to do, is to serve alcohol at private events without, at places that aren't, don't have a liquor license. At a private event, right, but it's not on public property.
Right.
So this is limiting, this is taking our cut, which really we've always had, which is no drinking on public property, which is mass general law, and then just kind of refining that to make it a little clearer, so that we're not going to have, you know, people renting out parks and serving alcohol at parties, basically, and making them private. Unless it's a fundraiser, like North River Arts Festival, or something like that, and it's for not, it's, it's not-for-profit, not commercial.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Diane?
I don't think.
Oh, so it doesn't, so Daniel Webster weddings at, at like the Daniel Webster, those have never been, that's never been an issue because that's a private event.
But it's public property, and our bylaw says no drinking on public property, unless you're doing these public events.
I don't, maybe, maybe Attorney Galvin can answer that, because I don't think that it's considered public property because it's leased. Ms. Attorney Galvin?
I had that question too. I had that question about the lease, what we've just done, Boys and Girls Club, which is leased, I think the North River Arts is leased, we still seem to say that.
So the, Boys and, Boys and Girls Club, did that have a, a liquor license permit for the, I didn't go to the.
I, I don't, I don't know what they, the Boys and Girls Club, do you remember, do you remember what type of license they got for this?
One day.
One day?
Yes.
Someone applied.
Right?
It's just a minute.
Yeah, just as this is written, I guess my question is also directed to Attorney Galvin. As this is written, sorry, thank you. As this is written, the question that I'm, I'm hearing, and I was wondering as well, as a restaurant operator, does, does this, as it's written, preclude weddings, anniversary, what have you, private events on public land across the board? I can't get married at the Daniel Webster, at the beach, et cetera. There's, there's no avenue to award me a one-off for that as a private event.
It says, except with the advance written consent of the Select Board and pursuant to a one-day special license.
Right, but as this is written, it, it seems very, very specific that it's specifically for public events, or certified fundraising event, nonprofit event, charitable organization, et cetera, et cetera. It's a little bit of a granular question, I think, but it's important.
So it's not, according to mass general law, it's not, you, nobody ever had the right to have a wedding reception on the beach and serve alcohol.
Go ahead.
Right, thanks. So, that was never something that people could do, but that, that essentially changed with the change to the bylaw at December town meeting, when that amendment was added, adding the 12C licensed caterers, which actually isn't even a legal ad because 12C licensed caterers only are for private events. So, I think that that's why, maybe that's why the Attorney General hasn't sent an approval yet, I talked to them today, they were going to, you know, research it a little bit more. So as everybody knows, there was kind of a push for renting the parks and beaches for private events, which people were vehemently against. And that's what kind of prompted me to kind of look more closely at the bylaw that passed last December. And so then I came up with this, so that if, if it does go forward where parks are rented out for private events, those events will not have alcohol, they will not have an alcohol. They will not have an alcohol license.
Got it.
Does that make sense now? This was never something that you could do, you know, at any point in time in the past.
Okay.
So I don't know why, am I making a joke? I don't get it. What's funny?
No. Are we good?
Why are we laughing?
Who's laughing? I'm not laughing.
Okay. Well, am I being confusing?
We're good. You guys good?
Right, so Daniel Webster Estate never falls under any of those categories because it's an event venue. So even though it may be technically owned by the town, it's an event venue.
Got it.
Like, you know?
I think we're good.
It would, anyways, it would be a private event, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't qualify under this.
Can I make your comment?
Yeah.
I just wanna say, if you re-watch what went on in December, I believe it was the town administrator who probably made the comments, he made mention, the selling point of changing this was that North River Arts and Daniel Webster were the ones being mentioned. And needing, and any one-day license that we had been giving all these years was technically against our bylaws because our bylaws just clearly said, "no drinking on public property." So we specifically spoke that North River Arts and Daniel Webster, even though they're leased, no one said they're not pri, and they're not public property because they're leased. We seem to still consider them public property governed by this bylaw. So, and it brings me back then to Daniel Webster, could not get a one-day license for a wedding reception because it doesn't fall under these public events.
That actually was never an argument that should have been made because it never applied. Those were always private events, the weddings, at an event venue, not on public land. I don't know. Attorney Galvin, do you have any comments?
I'm just waiting for everybody else to finish.
Okay. So, okay, well then, please.
So under chapter 138 12C, that's a state caterer's license, and I think Ms. Keith was absolutely right. That's a license that the caterer basically is to just tell the town they're coming. And as long as they're catering a private event that is not open to the public and follow the other requirements of 12C, they're allowed to do it wherever they want, and that kind of controls, it's a state law. I don't mind if you want to delete or select board-approved 12C licensed caterers because I think that they are operating at a state law, and that controls, because we can't have a bylaw that conflicts with it anyways. So I don't know why the AG is delayed in reviewing the bylaw, could be precisely as you say, I don't have any insight onto that. As it relates to the Webster Estate, you know, and the Boys and Girls Club, those are public properties that are leased on a long-term basis. When those organizations allow events like that to happen, I'm not sure that those are places where the public has access as invitees or licensees. Those are private events. So I'm not concerned with that.
The other?
So you're saying that the North River Arts, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Daniel Webster House would be exempt?
When they're having an event like that, it's not a place where the public has access, invitees or licensees, they're all special events. It's not open to the public.
But North Rivers is a
So, like, no one, I don't think anyone has a problem with the Daniel Webster House and the North River Arts, assuming some alcohol in their events, because we already know how those events go.
But
But do we want to be in the alcohol business, the town of Mossfield, and let other private events go on that we don't know how controlled they're gonna be? We shouldn't be in the alcohol business. I have no problem with exceptions to that, because there's a lot to do that, but it shouldn't be town-wide.
So this would allow them without, they wouldn't, there would be no discussion about, is it an exemption? Is the select board following the bylaw for those events? Because North River Arts Festival is a nonprofit, you know, and the Boys and Girls Club, you know, so they're not commercial events. So it would remove that question, if that question ever comes up, which is challenged a ton before this current select board, which is why that was brought on to the December one. It was fine the way it was brought on by the select board, but then that 12C licensed caterers was added.
Well, my memory was that this was brought up because there are block parties that are going on, there's people that are looking to use other public properties, and they wanted to serve alcohol.
Well, now, this is why I put this on.
And you proposed a limitation on
Right.
Some of those things.
Right.
And I think that it's fine, and within this, you know, I think it's perfectly legal to propose that. And if the town so chooses to limit, then it is, but I don't think it applies necessarily to the Webster Estate, to the North River Arts Building, and the Boys and Girls Club, which are leased on a long-term basis, and those events are not open to the public.
What happens if Green Harbor closes down that street as their party?
That's a fundraiser.
They're gonna, they used to have an Oktoberfest where they did a block party includes marginal street, but that was a fundraiser event.
Fundraiser.
Or it was a community event.
It was a fundraiser slash community event, but it was for the Green Harbor
Public event organized for fostering community fellowship.
Right. So there's really nothing that we do that kind of the whole town loves to do that's not gonna be still allowed by this? It's just the things that people don't want to see, that this is gonna help, this is gonna limit.
All right.
I just don't understand the whole anti-business mentality of this. I mean, you're allowing it for one entity, but not for another entity. And the whole thing is that when we were drafting these plans for this Harbor Park, at the moment, the way I look at it is, I think we got controls in it in regards to, especially for for-profit events to be held there. And I don't understand the difference between allowing it for a nonprofit, I mean, somebody that was for-profit.
I'm sorry that you don't understand the difference between a nonprofit and a for-profit.
No, 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 I don't understand why you choose to go with the, allow it for nonprofits, but not for a for-profit.
So the nonprofit and community events are the ones that we've always had that everybody loves to do? Like, the North River Arts Festival is just a really good example, okay? That's an event that people love, they don't want to see that go away. And it, and it's raising money for the organization. It's not putting, it's not taking, so I don't want to get into the whole, because we had an hour-long conversation about this, Eric, and we didn't agree. So we don't need to do it again.
I understood it, and I got a ton of people's emails in regards to it, in regards to their concerns with it. And the one biggest concern, not so much having an event there, but the one biggest concern in regards to people reaching out to me was closing it to the public. And the whole thing is that, okay, we're not gonna close it to the public. You know, and the whole thing is that, I think with making exceptions for fundraisers and all that, but not for for-profits, you could, I guess you could look at, is, I think, ridiculous because your catering's a one event, but not the other. And I think they both have, both benefits to the town on the overall.
I don't think that a caterer renting a public park and having a private party benefits the people of this town.
So this is a debate?
So, but that's not, that's not what
Why not the debate right now?
Not what this article is about. This article's about the liquor license.
I get that, but the whole thing is that, you know, something, it's either a debate here, or a debate at town meeting, so, I mean.
Well, I understand, but it's gonna get to be at a town meeting.
Right.
So why debate it twice? That's all I'm saying. I'm not
Well, you know what I'm gonna say, I'd like to get it just out in the open right now.
Okay.
People to think about, you know, something, and then the
I was trying to be subtle and not put it in the open.
I'm with you, man, I'm with you. I like to get things out.
Well, it was better this way, I got it out, so the whole thing is that, now you can do what you need to do.
All right. All right.
So you understand the intent of this, right?
I think everyone understands the intent.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Diane. All right. Ms. Keith, Article 37.
I wrote this on a Sunday, started maybe at noon, took some breaks on and off, finished at 8:30 at night, and I've had no feedback other than me writing it. So my, I wanna go straight to Attorney Galvin. How bad is it? How illegal is it? I know it's long, I know it's wordy. My intent was to write a bylaw that was something along the lines of like the right to farm. I numbered it, we have a historical preservation bylaw, and I numbered it to go like right after that, not that that number maybe has to stand, maybe that could be amended. But, so that was the point. The point of it is, it's along the same lines, it had to do with, the problem I saw with trying to look at the alcohol bylaw, and I couldn't figure it out again, I didn't have any help, was that maybe different properties needed to be treated differently, which is what I was just talking about. You know, does Daniel Webster House have to be treated one way, and then Harbor Park maybe be treated differently? So I went straight to, I said, "how can I get away from that problem?" And my idea was to write a general bylaw that was to try to solidify the public access that should be there for public passive parks. Other parks could be added to this, if they have like Veterans Park, and maybe you talk to the veterans people if you want to reserve something. So you could actually add all of our passive parks in here and kind of write their own little, you know, their own little rules or regulations or guidelines. But I was trying to guide the selectmen, and actually goes to what Mr. Kelly kind of just said. He said, "oh, people were upset about closing Harbor Park to the public." And he said, "but so we change that." But my thought is this, the select board and all of these people here in this room are constantly changing body over time. And so the select board, you could see, that's, this is what drove me to write this. The select board made a, started to draft a policy to close the park to the public in some instances, but then when people complained, and I was one of them who wrote a letter, they changed the policy to make a second draft. That, any, that, they could make that new policy where they're having parties or weddings in the middle of Harbor Park. What happens when a couple, few events go by, and the public is in there, because it's open to the public, somebody's walking their dog, somebody's kid is running around, and the people holding the events start to give feedback or complaints, that, you know, this isn't really working out. Then the policy can be changed by the select board. So I was trying to write a bylaw that would try to solidify somehow that Harbor Park, in particular, is, and passive parks, are supposed to be open to the public. They should be, they're held in special high regard, that the town kind of, they're kind of, up at the state level, they're protected type of thing. And so I was trying to work all of that in so that it would guide the select board into making policies that would not be excessively detrimental to public access. And I have no idea, though, what Attorney Galvin is gonna say.
Attorney Galvin?
First of all, Ms. Keith's article will be voted on at town meeting, as worded, unless it's amended in some way, shape, or form. My concern is that, and I've stated this before in other town meeting articles, is I'm worried about town meeting attempting to usurp executive action by the select board, by a town meeting vote. And my concerns are, as it relates to some of the guidance that's kind of mandated in Section 123, "special event permits shall mandate free public access and shall, shall be for events that enhance the public's usage of the park. Policies and permits shall not allow large private events, event activities that by their exclusive nature intimidate, disenfranchise the general public, and do not serve a public purpose." I'm just concerned about that language. And then the only other issue that I really have is with 125, the last line, the line is also in the coastal wetland, although it's all while parks are allowed, but any significant structures are prohibited. The coastal wetlands district actually allows a host of structures, but they are mostly water-dependent use structures, or structures that belong in a coastal wetland district. So I'm a little bit worried about the conflict of that language with the zoning bylaw. Those are my two concerns.
Can I just comment? I don't write any prohibitions about the coastal wetland zone, it's just information, you know, like, again, some, if you look at our general bylaws, there's some informational type, you know, to help guide you, or to just tell people what's going on, and that's all. I was just, I am just restating, summarizing what the coastal wetland says. There are no structures allowed for human use with water and running sewer and all that stuff. So, I mean, the coastal wetlands bylaw itself spells out what's prohibited and what isn't. So I, that part, I, you know, I didn't write, I just stated that it's in the coastal wetland zone. I didn't state that I was making any rules or regulations there.
I was kind of hoping that your article and Diane Jordan's article would mesh, and there'd only be one.
Well, again, I mean, I didn't work, didn't work with anybody, and, yeah, I mean, I didn't know until the end. It was all, came about, I think both of us were doing it last minute, but, so there was, there was nothing. But I, I was having a hard time, my own self, trying to figure out how to work that alcohol bylaw. I was, and I didn't have the, I didn't know about, I was trying to figure out, are these town-owned properties, are they leased? What do you do with them? So that didn't help.
Maybe you just sit down with Ms. Jordan and see if, what changes she's proposing to make to the bylaw satisfy you, or are you trying to get beyond that?
Again, I'm trying. Harbor Park to me is, again, to me, people need to understand, I, you know, I can't, I'm not trying to be a lawyer, and I can't stand here and make a big law case, but, you know, there's a lot of state protections. Well, and first of all, we voted on passive recreation at town meeting, which is why I use the word passive over and over again. And when we vote, when you, when you, there is no real set definition on passive recreation if you start looking at anybody who's gone to court or whatever. But passive recreation is usually the words are contemplating, you know, quiet, just meditation, walking, possible light hiking, of course, light jogging, sitting, reading, viewing birds, viewing nature. That's passive recreation. Having, drinking alcohol on that site, that's not in the definition of passive recreation if you were to like go to court. Having a wedding reception at Harbor Park is not passive recreation. Sitting and dining, even, and having parties like that, like some of the events that were going on in Duxbury, that's not passive recreation. That might be suitable, the wedding reception is suitable at the Daniel Webster State because we don't go there to recreate. You're not allowed in the building, it's closed most of the time, and nobody goes and walks around the front. You can if you want a little bit, but that's not a place for passive recreation. This park has a walking trail around it, and it's meant for passive recreation. I didn't want to write a bylaw that was so strict that I stuck just to that, because then you start getting into charitable events. And I even left room for people making money at like craft fairs, plant sales, the things that get, go on in front of town hall sometimes, on the historical property. And that was to leave room for people to discuss, like how much activity they wanted there, is this a good amount of activity? But I'm trying to rule out private parties, private parties that are closed to the public, even if someone was renting the center of the park, that's a very small park. And you cannot keep someone, if you rent the center of the park out to somebody who's having a corporate cookout, you cannot mandate that those people stay in the center of the park. They, once they're in, once the public is in a park, because there is public access to parks, but they would be able to roam freely. So you can't keep them, you might be able to keep the food and drink kind of contained, but they can take up the park. You're having a wedding reception, corporate outing, people are coming down, walking their dogs, you know, you look down into the park and you say, "oh, look, they're having an outing." Do you feel like you want to go in? Do you feel welcome in there? And are they uncomfortable with you? But they, to me, the private party shouldn't be there to begin with. So that's what I was trying to eliminate. It's some of the same thing that, I didn't touch alcohol, though. Alcohol, you could get a one-day license on here, according to this bylaw. You could have Stella Wagon beer come down, and as long as they're
I think we understand. As long as they're vending I think we understand.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions? All right. All right, that's it. Mr. Pesavich?
Just in Section 120-3, select board policies and permits. Could I just be clear on the language here? It's like the third sentence, it says, "no policies or permits shall" It's like the third sentence, it says, "No policies or permits shall allow the whole or partial usage, usage of a passive park to often become inconsistent with laws and votes that created the public and passive dedication." Shouldn't that read, "Whole or partial usage of a passage park to be inconsistent with laws and votes?" What do you mean by "too often"? Too often become?
Too often become inconsistent because I am allowing in this bylaw for things that really aren't passive recreation. Even something like the, uh, the craft fair, or plant sale, is not passive recreation.
But is that, does that say that the, that partial usage, usage of the park can occasionally be inconsistent?
Yeah. That's kind of what I was aiming for.
Well, I have something to say, but I know Trish has to get up for herself. She's called for it. It's his call for it.
All right. All right, I think that's it. I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, do you need to adjourn your meeting?
Yeah, I do.